I'm gonna call the meeting to order. This is the meeting of the March 8, 2021 Select Board of the Town of Millis. We're getting a bit late because of technical difficulties. I hope everyone, I thank everyone for their patience and hope that we can nevertheless conduct the town's business this evening. With me this evening, along with myself, Jim McCaffrey, the Chair of the Select Board, and Mr. Pete Germain, who's the Vice Chair, Ms. Erin Underhill, who is our Member of the Board, the Clerk. We also have our Operations Manager, Karen Buray, and Mike Zenzky, our Town Administrator. And we also have some featured guests this evening. First of which is Mr. John McVey. We asked John, as we have every week, every time we've met over the last year, just come and give us any updating can on the COVID issues, vaccines, or what have you. So, John, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you, Jim McCaffrey. Good evening. To reiterate, what people have seen in the news as of late, vaccine has continued to be an issue, but we're all eventually gonna get vaccinated. To give some stats regarding that, I would say, the state of Massachusetts, currently, there were two and a half million doses delivered, and as of March 4th, almost 2 million doses in the state of Massachusetts given. And that's including dose 1 and 2. The state has been looking at mass clinics as the main method of achieving vaccination rates in Massachusetts. Currently, in the Town of Millis, you know, we're hoping that at some point in time, probably, maybe in April, they might, with the J&amp;J vaccine, they might allow local vaccinations to occur again, or local allocation of vaccine to occur. If that's the case, we could start doing local vaccinations through the high school, as we initially planned, or the middle school, I should say. Currently, that not being the case, we're all, we're looking at homebound residents, and the senior housing as being the main target for vaccinations within the next few weeks to the beginning of April. And that would be with Board of Health, and with the assistance of the Fire Department, which has helped us quite a bit in this whole endeavor. We are currently still in yellow, which is better than red, obviously. And we've been in yellow for the past few weeks, and we hope to continue that, that trend into the near future. And I suspect that will be the case. So, that's, you know, that's my, you know, summary of what's been going on thus far, in the vaccination front, and as far as what the community transmission has. I don't know if Kathy's on the line as well as to add to that, but that's the focus from my end.
All right. Thank you, Kathy. You have anything you'd like to add?
Nope. Just, just to reinforce that, we are hoping to get vaccine for those two endeavors, where we've applied for it, but we have not received it. So, we'll keep hoping.
Well, thank you. I mean, I want to make sure everybody does understand that it's, the Board of Health is ready, willing, and able to get going. They just need to get the green light, and along with our firefighters, if we can get that, then we know we'll be able to move forward. So, hopefully, that will come sooner rather than later. Any other comments from the Board members, or from Mr. McVey? You all set? Okay. One other thing I'd like to just bring up tonight, and that does relate to the Board of Health. We've been asked to make an announcement tonight, so we're gonna make it with some caveats to it. Lions and the Millis Garden Club are trying to plan for a Millis Beautification Day, which is scheduled at this point for the morning of April 24th. That's a Saturday. Now, we're gonna be working, they're gonna be working with the Board of Health to make sure that we follow all necessary protocols. And I think what we'll try to do at our next meeting of this board is probably invite the folks from the Lions and the, and the Garden Club to come and explain to the community what kind of safeguards are gonna be put in place to make sure that this is a, a safe endeavor. We all know that we had to cancel it last year, and we not only postponed, but we had to cancel it. And maybe this year, we will be able to move forward, but we're still in a, a phase which requires social distancing, limits on groups, other safeguards that we have to follow, so we're gonna be mindful of them as well. But, at this point, I would like to just alert the community to the plan for this on the 24th, if you wanna mark that date. And we'll continue to work with the Board of Health, and the sponsoring groups, and our DPW, to hold the event if we can, and to certainly do it in a way that protects everybody's safety. So, with that, any other items that anybody probably gonna bring up at this time? Okay. Okay, there was one?
No, thank you.
Okay. The next item we have on our agenda is a appointment for a Cultural, Cultural Council member. Karen, if you could pull up the paperwork here.
I will. Bear with me. I don't know if you wanna see her actual... Oops. Sorry. Ready to go.
Okay.
Struggle is real tonight. Okay, there we are. So, it's Jennifer.
If we're there, I can't see it. Can anybody see it?
Oh, hold on.
There we go.
All right. Are you able to see it now? Let me see. Hold on. Take them out. There it go. There it is.
Okay.
Can you see it, Jim?
I can see it, but if you scroll up from there.
Certainly.
We have the, from the Cultural Council Chair. All right, well, that's enough for now. I mean, we do have an appointment here that the Cultural Council has asked us to make to, for a new member of the, the Cultural Council of the Town of Millis. If someone could provide me with a little help here, maybe Karen, maybe Erin, maybe somebody. And I'm embarrassed to say that I probably cannot pronounce this name very well.
[laughing]
So, I'll just go with Jennifer.
Unfortunately, I do not know it either, Jim, so I apologize. I don't wanna, I don't wanna ruin her name here.
I don't want, all right. Jennifer S.,
Skivich.
Who has graciously volunteered to be a member of the Cultural Council, and she has attended a meeting, and the Stephanie Koppus, the Chair, has asked us to make this appointment. So, I'm thrilled that she's able to step forward. Just as a word to the wise, she's filled in the checkbox for perhaps considering other committees as well. So, I'm sure she'll hear from others. But in any event, I would take the motion to appoint her to the Millis Cultural Council.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Ms. Jennifer, and I'm not even gonna try to suggest it or something.
I'm gonna say it's, Pete, I'm gonna say it's Zerutsky Siskovich.
Okay.
Or something close.
I'll accept that, to become a member of the Cultural, Millis Cultural Council.
Second.
Let's move to seconded, that we appoint Ms. Siskovich as the member of the Cultural Council. I'll poll the Board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion's carried unanimously. Thank you very much for volunteering.
May I make a quick comment? Looking at her credentials, I'm very impressed with the amount of effort she's put in in a variety of other locations, including Cambridge and so forth. And she appears to be quite an accomplished pianist. So, I think that's quite an accomplishment. So...
Well, we're very delighted to have her step forward. So, okay. The next item on the agenda is a conversation with Mr. Jim Petro, on the Building Department Budget Presentation. We've asked him to wait as long as we possibly could, but we finally got here. So, Mr. Jim Petro, are you still with us?
Yes. I'm here.
Welcome.
All right.
Delighted.
I'm happy to be here. No pun intended. You can't see my face, 'cause I don't know how to put a bag on.
This has been, this has been a night of technical difficulties, so it's all good.
Wait, let me, let me get my light.
Mike, are you, are you able to see the shared screen here with your, with your budget?
Yeah.
Is this what you would like to speak to first, or would you like to speak to the document you sent recently?
Wait, my wife's playing with my mouse. Hold on. He's a nitwit.
Oh, boy.
That's out of order.
[laughing]
That was out of order.
Here's your local programming. Michael, would, do you want to, there he is.
Yeah, she's an expert, not me.
Michael, do you wanna speak to what's on the screen, or do you wanna speak to the document you just emailed a few minutes ago?
What's on the screen? Hold on.
A little while ago. This is your...
On the budget, okay. Yeah, we'll start with, I guess we'll start with the budget.
Okay.
All right. So, in haste, they just put this thing together to, with the help of Carol Johnson, for the salaries. I didn't change anything from last year, just carried it forward. It's the same thing as last year, with all the other line items. The inspection compensation is the same as we did last year. As you know, we had to come back and get a reserve fund transfer, 'cause we went over. We used a $70,000 mark, just to have a, a starting point. We know there's a lot of projects, there's a lot of inspections. So, once we reach the $70,000 inspection, compensation, that's where the inspectors get paid $40 per inspection. And we'll come in and ask for a reserve fund transfer if we need more money. But we put the $70,000 up there, like we did last year, based upon an estimate, right? Everybody says, "Well, how much, how much business are you gonna do this year?" If I knew that, well, it'd be a different story for everybody. So, we're gonna take a, a general shot at it, and we've been using $70,000, and we'll see how it goes. And hopefully, we can stay there. But with the construction climate, the way it is, things seem to be moving forward. But cost prices for lumber and materials that go in through the roof, I don't know how they can continue going this high, but we'll see. So, the budget is laid out. I don't know, as you can see it, I'm not gonna go through every line item. The only issue I may have, besides the inspector fees, compensation, would probably be mileage. So, the mileage, we always set at 2,500. Last year, we went over a little bit. And if we do, we'll, we'll ask for Mike Zenzky to see if we can rob Peter to pay Paul. But I don't know if you have in front of you the Building Department Permit Issuance Analysis, which is the amount of money that we've taken in. Is it right there? It's upside down. Yeah, there it is.
Yeah, hold on. Bear with me. There you go.
Is it? No, it's not the way I want. Wait a minute. That's, that's cost of construction.
Wait a minute. Sorry.
Don't make me dizzy.
I'm sorry. There. Permit issued analysis.
Yeah, yeah. That's it. It's there right there. Okay. In 2017, we did, took in 300,000. 2018, we took 323,000. 2019, we took in 546,000. And 2020, we took in 492,000, almost 493,000. So, that's a, it's a large amount of money for the Building Department to take in. The budget for this year is the same, right around 239,000. Same thing as last year. And as you can see, the budget's well below the income from the Building Department, what we've been taking in. The estimated cost of construction, as you can see down below, is the amount of money that is estimated that it costs to build each building permit, right? So, we had, 2018, we had 59 million, that, I think we had the school back then, right? Everything is figured in that, whether we waive the building permit fee or not. So, in general, town projects, the building permit fees are waived, but we add in the construction costs for the town, a bunch of costs for construction. So, you can get a general idea. The way the trends are, is we should be doing the same, or doing, you know, going up, as long as the economy stays the way it is. We're a very busy department. I wanna thank Gary Pelletier, who is our Assistant Commissioner, for stepping in since I've been out back in January. Recent appointment, Bob Fogarty, who's our local inspector, for stepping in. The other wire inspectors, the plumbing inspectors, the whole department have been in since I've been absent. I do hope to get back there. Doctor says probably May sometime, and I think my wife is ready for me to go back there tomorrow. But, eh, good days and bad days, right? So, the good day, she's happy I'm home. The bad day, she's kicking me out. But hopefully, I'm anxious to get back to work, as you can probably imagine. And with this budget, again, we've, we've kept it, you know, the same as last year. The other thing I wanna go over is the permit issuings, issuance down below. You can see every year, permits have gone up. So, we went from, from 2017 to 2020, we've done 518 more permits over that span. So, that's a recap of the budget. Inspector fees, if there's another, there's another slide that shows the inspections, the inspector fees paid, and the mileage paid. I don't know if you can get to that, Karen?
Uh, I, hold on a minute. Does that, bear with me. Let me just do. I close that out. Sorry. Is that the next page, maybe?
The same one.
Nope. Is that, the only other thing I have, Mike, is this, the major construction in Millis?
Oh, well, that's okay. Yeah, we'll, we'll leave that there.
Okay.
Just to go over inspections for the department for 2020, we've conducted 2,522 inspections. The mileage that we paid out was a little over 2,500. It was $3,031 and change. The inspect fees paid out was $85,980, which is almost $16,000 more than the $70,000 budget that we had. So, the building permit, Building Department permit fees, obviously, there's plenty of money in there. I know it goes in the general fund, but we have to ask for it when we need it to pay the, the inspector's inspection. Anybody have any questions that I can answer on what we've gone over so far? Okay. If not, the, up there is a little piece I put together, just off the top of my head, on what's going on. The Toll Brothers, obviously, as you drive by, you can see there's quite a few buildings that have been up. They've started on the Phase 2 project, part of the project. And the Phase 2 continues of carrying through the Glen Allen Boulevard, and then all the threeplexes and fourplexes in the middle. So, they're, they're working on that in the Phase 2. And Phase 3, they started by clearing all the land in the back, all the way up through the whole Phase 3 project. They, if you've been by there lately, can see that they, they cleared the whole entire forest down. So, the next thing they're gonna be starting to do is put the road in, and the culverts, detention basins, and getting Phase 3 under construction, getting ready for building permits, to start building Phase 3. As, you know, they've been selling them pretty good over there, from what I hear from Toll Brothers. It hasn't slowed down. You know, I think the winter slowed them down somewhat. I do expect them to have a good spring and summer. So, Toll Brothers, obviously, is a lot of work, and, you know, for the inspectors to get over there, they're, they're demanding. We give them good service. They're paying for building permit fees, and all their fees, we get there within a good timeframe to keep them rolling. And when they have issues, we obviously slow them down, have them fixed. They've been very cooperative through this whole project. Acorn Place, Bob Fox's project, they're just about halfway through the over 55 up there. They got a couple more single-family homes to build on the, on the other, other phase, but they, you know, intend to finish that project. And then, from what I heard from Bob, is that the Leo Braun property, I guess, is going to town meeting to vote. And he has a, I guess he has an option to buy that. And then, from what he tells me, he's gonna propose several more homes to go in there if he does purchase it. Cube Smart, as you come in from Millis on 109, you'll see on the right-hand side, that's gonna be, we issued the permit, and foundation and construction of the building on the right, that's Cube Smart. They've started that. They have another building that, when they come by on the left, that's gonna be a much bigger building. They haven't been permitted for that yet, but that's probably another couple or three weeks. Kensington Place is almost finished. That's Tom McConner's 40B. South End Farms is, also has a few houses left to be constructed, probably a half a dozen or so. So, those are high-end houses. Those are on, keep going as well. The Assisted Living, which everybody's probably wondering about, it's been sitting there for a while, has been bought by another company out of Chicago. And it appears that they're on now the fast track to get permitted, to construct that, right? It's been sitting there so long now. So, they, they're looking to get their plans and specifications in, and getting ready to go to stop permitting them. But we have to go through the whole process with them. They have the plan review process. 1073 Main Street, the old GAF Warehouse as well. I got an email from Dave Baker. They're on the fast track to try to get their permitting and their plan review done, so they can get a permit and start renovating that building. 114 Union Street has another meeting with the ZBA. They're on the tail end of their permitting process. That's the 40B at the old Herman Schuh Building, that they knocked down. So, they're on a fast track of getting their permits. Tom Roach has a 40B off of Main Street. Cottage Ave, there's 38 new houses there that have been gone through the planning board, and they're gonna have to do all their roadwork. I talked about the ongoing toll in Acorn Place. There's an approved subdivision for Ridge Street. I think it's 37, 38 houses in there. Bob's another Bob Fox project, in which he's, he's getting anxious to start cutting trees and do the roadwork. So, general construction throughout the town, South End Farm. Also, before I went in, I ran a medical, Nick at the gas station there, at the corner of Plain Street, Main Street, has approached me on going to the planning board for some sort of project with all the property that he, he owns there, that's next to the Town Hall, including the gas station. So, he's looking set for the permitting requirements for multifamily dwelling units over there. So, I don't know, haven't seen anything submitted from him, but I know his engineer is working on something there. So, that, that's just a quick overview that I went through before tonight's meeting, that I could remember on what's happening and what's going on. Just to give you an idea that Millis is a very active town in construction, and it appears to be gonna continue in the future. So, we're a busy department. And again, I wanna thank my department for all the work that they do, especially Liz, Liz Rand, our Department Assistant, and Steve, Yankee. They hold down the fort in the Building Department, and answer the calls, and do the MUNIS stuff and all that stuff. So, very, very important people, and as part of keeping things moving forward. Anybody have any questions that I haven't, or you got any other thing that I haven't touched on that you want me to?
Mike, just one other project that I wanna get on your list, is the folks from GTE. They've got, they're the, they're gonna be on down Long Main Street, down further near Midway. They're gonna be putting a building in for marijuana cultivation. I don't know where they stand in terms of permitting and whatnot. We do have information from the Cannabis Control Commission, that their licenses on the track. In other words, they've already, they've already applied for the license. The CCC has looked at it, is ready to approve it. Select Board last meeting sent a letter into this Cannabis Control Corporation, Commission, I'm sorry, that says that, from our point of view, their, their application is in compliance. So, that one, not exactly sure what the date is, because of course, I don't think these folks do anything until they get their license. But that should be coming as relatively soon as well, we believe.
Oh, okay. Good, good to know. Is that the Colt Manufacturing?
Nope. It's across the street from Colt Manufacturing. Colt Manufacturing is a...
Across the street?
Manufacturing, gonna be a manufacturing operation. So...
I didn't know, I didn't know about that one. Thank you.
They didn't? Um, we'll have to see. But the manufacturing, which is a Visa, they've told us there's not a lot of reconstruction of the building, but I'm sure there's something.
Oh, yeah.
And that's the go-to.
Thank you.
Manufacturing. So, so there's two of those out there.
Okay. Oh, boy. Good to know.
Come on back, Mike.
I'm coming. I'm working on it, believe me. Slow progress.
Thanks for hanging. Sorry for all the confusion earlier, but...
It's all right.
Very much appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is gonna be Mr. McKay. First of all, we're gonna deal with Snow and Ice, and then we'll move to the Budget Presentation from the DPW. So, Mr. McKay, are you on? I, I can't see it, but you assume you're here.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last year, we squeaked by with this, and we did not have to come and ask for an expendence of the Snow and Ice budget. This year, we have to. So, you have a, I think you, yeah, you did, you got this printout. This was presented to the Finance Committee on last Wednesday night, and they did vote unanimously. I'll get into that at the very end of it. So, if we go down to the bottom, not the bottom page, where I am, sorry, just a little more, Karen, back up. There you go. This is the tally, the Snow and Ice expenses. It's budgeted. There are Snow and Ice expenses... Our snow and ice expenses at one seventy, seven twenty-seven. So year-to-date expended is two-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents. So that budget is in deficit of ninety-nine-thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-two, thirty-seven. Snow and ice salaries is budgeted at forty-eight thousand and expended to date is ninety-six-thousand, oh, eight-oh-point-four-four. And that's a deficit of forty-eight-thousand, oh, eight-oh-point-four-four. So it leaves the whole budget in deficit for this year so far is a hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand, three-thirty-two-point-eight-one. The good news is it's not going to snow up for the rest of the year now that I just jinxed us. And then the, the salt shed is completely full, which is, that's a good thing for, for, for next year because each year, you know, we, we don't, we go into the year, already twelve, fourteen thousand dollars because we, we fill the shed up from the previous year. So the Finance Committee did vote on a motion made by Kathy McGinnis, made a motion to authorize spending in the excess of appropriation for the snow and ice not to exceed an additional two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. It was seconded by Craig Schultz and it was voted unanimously. And what that means is if, you know, I mean, gosh, I hope we don't, I mean, that's almost a hundred and, what, a hundred-and-three-thousand dollars over what we've already expended. So I certainly hope we're not going to have to come back to not to exceed that amount. So I would ask, so we can pay these bills. The salaries are paid. We, as, as always, all salaries are always paid. And, but the expenses, the expenses have not been paid and we can't do that until both boards vote for this appropriation.
Any questions from the board? I guess just for a clarification from either you, Jim, or Struzinski or Carol. Upon, this is the one account where we can overspend. We, I think most of us know this. So we can pay the people, et cetera, et cetera, but we do have to pay it now at this point. So what's, where does the money come from?
The money, the overage gets charged on the tax recapping is raised next year on the taxes.
But that's the standard operating procedure for this kind of activity?
Yes.
Nothing unusual about it other than the amount's high. But again, we had a good year last year. We've also put this budget, you know, somewhat higher than we did in years gone by. This turned out to be a year of, you know, snow, ice, et cetera. And as we all know, it's not just how many inches of snow you get, it's when, what day, how long, whether the ice comes or doesn't, et cetera. So, and of course, we have more roads these days than we had five or six years ago that we have to take care of. So the request then is to approve deficit spending of not to exceed two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars.
That's correct.
So question, other members of the board have questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman?
I don't, I don't really have a question. I think though to add to what you're, you said. We anticipate that the snow and ice budget on an annual basis will probably exceed the amount of what's been budgeted for and the amount is a hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. The problem is that we've chosen between the Select Board and the FINCOM to not increase that substantially, even though we know it will cost more because you cannot take from that budget in the event that we don't spend all that money. So it's our choice and it's one of the unique things that's allowed in this state to budget a little low, anticipate you're going to spend more, which is what we're doing, but not trap yourselves into having a budget that actually is too high in those lean years of snow and ice. So that was just a clarification I think it's important to make to the townsfolk.
Other questions? I take a motion to authorize deficit spending?
I'll move that we authorize deficit spending up to a max of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the snow and ice budget for this fiscal year.
So it's been moved, it's seconded for the Select Board to approve an excess appropriation for snow and ice in the amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. So I will poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germain?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, did you say two-fifty or two-hundred thousand?
Two-fifty.
Two-fifty. Thank you.
I may have said, but it's two-fifty.
Okay. Just a hard, hard time hearing.
Yeah. Got a jury-rigged operation here.
It's all right. Just want to make sure.
Anyway, two-fifty, that's a movement. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Is under, so?
Yes.
That motion is carried unanimously. So again, thank you, Mr. McKay, for bringing that forward. And thanks to you and to all the folks out there, day in and day out, who do this work, twenty-four hours a day, middle of the night, Saturdays, Sundays, weekdays, whatever it is, to keep the roads safe for everybody. So thanks. It's not just the money, it's the effort and we appreciate it.
Thank you. And I'll relay that message to the crew. Thank you.
Please. All right. The next item of the agenda is the opportunity for the board to hear the presentation for the budget for the DPW. The DPW proposed budget presentation for fiscal year twenty-two. And so we have quite a piece, quite a few elements of this, just so the public listening will understand. This will cover the highways operation, it'll cover water and sewer, it'll cover stormwater, it'll cover capital. So it's a broad-ranging presentation on a variety of items dealing with the public works infrastructure of this town of Millis. So with that, Mr. McKay, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. At the beginning of the process, the town administrator sent an email out to all department heads to, you know, to bolster the, all their departments of the work that was done during, you know, this time of COVID. And you've had many presentations of all departments, you know, working through this crisis of COVID. And the DPW was no stranger to that also. I mean, we worked through, you know, twenty-four hours a day, as you stated, snowstorms, water main breaks. You know, David and his crew were here every day through the pandemic. And they've made quite a lot of sacrifices, putting themselves, you know, out there. Luckily, thank God, nothing came through the Department of Public Works. And, you know, we see the light at the end of the tunnel. Hopefully someday the department will be able, when the governor sees fit for a DPW workers to be vaccinated, I think that would be a great help to moving forward. I'd like to thank the fire chief, Mr. Barrett. Early on, when, you know, the town was low on PBE and, and, and equipment, he shared that. He didn't have to, but he did. And he made sure that workers, you know, the DPW workers had masks. And I'm talking early on when it was very scarce. So I want to thank him. And, and so getting into the budget. There is a, there is sixty pages here. I don't plan on going through all sixty pages. I tried to give everyone enough information to back up. I think what we could do is if we can go over the highlighted page that I typed up and we can get into, most of them are the, you know, the wants and the needs of the department. So if I, if you don't mind, if I keep changing glasses, I apologize because I have reading glasses and that's what happens when I get old. So I will read from this page, FY twenty-two Department Highlights. The department has requested two above-level service-
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Are you old, you said?
I'm sorry?
You said you're getting old?
Yes.
Like, you need glasses? Why do you start losing your hair, buddy?
Yeah, yeah. That's what happened. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. The department has requested two above-level service appointments. So the first one is as the Budget and Procurement Manager. Under the supervision of the Director of Public Works, they oversee the administrative activities of the department and supports complex and multi-departmental budgeting, the responsibilities of the procurement of goods and services, and the support of the DPW activities. The position is a key part of the management team and participates in management meetings and discussions, decision-makings, form professional work in analyzing budgetary data requests and reports. With that, we, you know, I supplied you with the Form Six, the rationale of, of, we had that, what that position will do. They also gave you a job description, which is, you know, most cases, a lot of times it doesn't, you know, come up readily accessible. These budgetary, this Budget and Procurement Manager is usually associated with most department, you know, DPW departments that have multiple departments under them. So this is, this was taken from across the board. And so what the person will do, we are streamlining, we're finally up and running with our work order system that is online. And we're actually, we're live with that. We're recording actual work orders, service requests from the public. So it'll be a permanent record forever. So we need somebody to oversee that, that, that process. Also, we're looking at Carol and Terry. We just looked at this new type of software that will manage the way that we can start doing our own billing for impervious area for new properties. We're just looking into that software. We, we'll look, I'll move on with that a little better as, as I get more information on it. But Carol and Terry and myself have looked at it and we're very impressed with that, you know, with the software. And most importantly, we'll be able to, you know, shrink down the costs of, you know, using outside vendor Kleinfelter for doing the billing aspects of it. This person will also see the, the representation and, and filing of credit, credits and all types for stormwater management. They will also process and manage the water and sewer costs if somebody comes in and files for some sort of abatement and will prepare all that for the, for the bill. Part of it, Karen, if you go to the, past the, and then we'll come back up to this and we can go down to the, well, let me just read one, I'm sorry, one, I'll read one more. And also would, would have to increase the Department Assistant One from twelve hours to nineteen hour, nineteen hours because that person will have to now take over the responsibility of the Department Assistant Three of paying all the bills for the, for enterprise funds, three enterprise in, in, in one general fund. So where are we going to get the money for this? Karen, if you can go down a couple and we'll come back up.
All right.
A little further down. Next one, next one, next page, please. Keep going, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
There you go. So, I mean, this was proposed last year, but at the time it wasn't really seen all the way through. So some of these numbers may not be accurate for the GLs that they are, they're associated with. So where will we get these funds for? I'm not asking for the, the town to come up with outside sources. The only thing they may have to do is come up with some funding for the general aspect of it. But we would take four thousand dollars out of the engineering services, a four thousand for the procurement manager, two thousand for the department assistant. Services engineering for sewer would be five thousand and two thousand for the department assistant one. Services engineering water is five thousand and two thousand for the department assistant two. Services engineering stormwater, this is the big one, of eight thousand dollars and two thousand dollars for the department assistant one. So that's a total of twenty-two thousand for the procurement manager and eight thousand for the department assistant two. That would eliminate DPW overtime, which runs right now in the, is usually around six, seven, eight thousand dollars, depending on the year. Savings would be for GCG associates yearly paving contract that they assist us with putting that out. Would be able to take that on with this person. And Kleinfelter, I mean, these are, as you can see, FY nineteen, we paid Kleinfelter ten thousand dollars, twenty, fifteen thousand dollars in FY twenty. And FY twenty-one, which is accurate to almost the same penny this year, of twenty-one thousand, sixteen thousand dollars. And what does that do? That, that will take the, the task. We use climbing to support the abatement, appeal and credit process and the billing. Ty and Juan also does a yearly water and sewer rate study for us and that costs us five thousand dollars. This position would take care of that setting of the, of, of the rates, working with the, the Finance Director and the Town Clerk and whoever it has to. So the total will be thirty-one thousand, four hundred dollars in savings and twenty-two thousand dollars would come out of the budgetary items that are already there for them. So that's those two positions. Do you want to ask questions now or do you want to wait till the end, Mr. Chairman?
I'm going to ask a question and others can too.
Sure.
Because there's a lot, so maybe it's better to just jump in. I just want to clarify the proposal on the Department Assistant One, increase in hours. Does that take this from a not benefits eligible, eligible to benefits eligible position?
No, we're talking with the, we kept it nineteen-hour position, so twenty hours is threshold to, is a benefited position. It's not now and we, we request that it would still remain a non-benefited position.
Okay. I just want to ask a general question then about, you know, the water sewer rate support. And, you know, part of me says that, well, first of all, I think the proposal is a sound one to bring it in-house, to utilize in-house capabilities, which we've been talking about for a while, to do some of these things. But what I want to ask is in terms of just over a period of years, let's say every third year or so, you bring in the outside third party to take another look at rate setting, to make sure that, I guess, an independent review. Have we thought about that at all or? I just think that from a process perspective, I like the idea of bringing in-house. I also like the periodic, you know, outside view of what the rate structure might be. But I don't know if you have any comment on that at this point or what your thoughts might be?
My, my thoughts would be that, you know, each year we have to set the rates and with, everything is so complex now with, with all the new customers that are coming on. Without further discussion, we're going to discuss PFAS and, and the cost of what that's going to be for rate payers. And that will be added on. We're, we're pretty sound. The, the budget before PFAS is very sound. And it has a good future for the next several years. So yes, I would agree that, you know, each year, you know, this person would be able to update the board on, you know, could we lower rates, you know, and, and look at it in, in that way. And, and then they would look, we could bring somebody in every three to five years to, to review that process. That's how it was done in the past. It was always done in-house. The town administrator used to, he used to do the budget. He was to set the rates. And every third to fifth year, as you stated, he would have somebody come in and review to make sure that everything was, you know, up to speed.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Mr. Germain or is under, he have some questions on this part of it?
I don't for this part. Thanks.
No, I, I've read through it and just listened to what he had to say and I'm comfortable. So that's fine.
Okay, great.
So to, to move on, the department has also requested an HEO laborer. Under the supervision of the DPW superintendent, the laborer will assist with general fund duties, maintaining parks, roadways and assisting at the cemetery. With this new position, it will relieve the need of staff assigned to the enterprise funds of maintaining general fund duties. With the acceptance of this, with the acceptance, with the acceptance of Hickory Hill subdivision at this year's town meeting, the position will also assist in overseeing the maintenance required for snow plowing, road repair and general needs for the public. And I'll just make one comment. Where did I get these, these positions? The Select Board, the need for these positions came directly from a Select Board study of the Department of Public Works dated March twentieth, March two, twenty twenty. The study was performed by Community Barragan Associates LLC. I believe you all have a copy of that, that study. And so I believe it's even online for the public to, to, to view it. In the Form Sixes, I gave you- In the Form 6s, I gave you, with the position, I actually highlighted the page where the, where they recommended both of these, the upgrade for the procurement manager, the more hours for the department assistant. And what they came up with is they, they felt that the town, in the general fund now, we're talking just the general fund, that the staffing level was for full-time employees below what average towns of our size and duties have. So they did recommend in this for a, an appointment of two new departments. I think that what we all have to look at, the study does show that, you know, we need these services, I mean, these appointments. And most importantly, we have finished in the, he'll be in very shortly, we finally finalized the, almost a full year comparison per hour of work, the workload that is assigned to the DPW. We broke it down, the percentages are still very much in favor, favor of the water and sewer staff doing general fund duties. So that presentation is coming and I think that that will bolster, you know, the need of, of this, this position. So I think that that's, you know, that, that part of the general fund's done. I don't know if anyone wants to ask me questions about the, and I also gave you the job description and the Form 6 further into your packet, the no need to go over every single page. But maybe I can highlight the costs. The rate, the rate of hire is $24.52 for yearly salary of $51,160. They would, health insurance, the most expensive habit pillar insurance is $19,000 a year that the town would have to, you know, put up. And there's a clothing allowance of $850. What is proposed is if we follow the structure that we have, it would be 75% paid out of the general fund and 25% would go towards the stormwater as we've looked at most of the work, you know, coincides with, you know, the two, two departments working together.
Okay. All right. So again, I, this is certainly, just referred back to the study that was done in the DPW department. It did call for these changes and some additions. It also called for a departmental reorganization, which already happened, which you've already implemented, around, you know, direct supervision, supervisor responsibility for the, for the water system and sewer system, et cetera. So we've been moving in this direction. I think that the paradigm, a community paradigm report did indicate a recommendation of adding up to four full-time positions in the, you know, labor force. But they did recognize that it's, you know, towns like ours are going, if we're going to try to implement something like that, it has to be phased in, we can't just do it. So this is a conservative effort rather than overreaching. So I'm not going to ask you if you think we should add another one.
No.
I want people to understand this is not, this, this could be the, you know, the next step in the, the journey here, getting our department where we need it to be, but it's not necessarily, not necessarily the last step.
Chairman McCaffrey?
Yes.
If, if I may, I do have a, like, comment slash question, I suppose. One thing about this that is really appealing to me is that the, some of, some of the work that Kleinfelder currently does for us could be taken in-house. And on that note, I read through the DPW study and another thing that had been suggested in there was getting a town engineer, which especially with all the, the water issues, if, you know, we had the right person in for that, it sounds like we could also, you know, continue to alleviate a lot of the money that is currently being spent on Kleinfelder. Looking through all the documentation, a lot of money is spent on Kleinfelder. And while I know they have expertise in, you know, those specific areas, it would be great to consider having some of that in-house as appropriate. So I don't know if now would really be the time to do that, but I did want to mention that I would definitely be interested in further exploring that.
Thank you. I could, I have a proposal for that. That was proposed about four years ago. I can certainly, and I totally agree with you. I think that, that, and funds for that could be paid through, you know, planning board expenses, peer review for the board of health. It could be, you know, many, many ways that, you know, that a, a full-time engineer could be paid for. And it would be sustained for as long as the, the growth of Nellis in, in, is being done. I mean, you just heard the building commissioner, you know, elaborator on very, you know, a lot of building, you know, even developments, that we send out a lot of costs, you know, just the, the cost for the Glen Ellen project. I mean, we, we paid an engineering firm, you know, peer review costs for that, which didn't cost us anything, but it was in the hundreds of, hundreds of thousands of dollars for that, and they're not done. So that, that's something I could work with the town administrator and get a proposal, you know, maybe not for this fiscal budget year, but, you know, we can get something ready or if you want it this year, I'm sure we can get something by next week for you.
Well, I think that, and I'll just add a comment and then I'll ask Mr. Germaine. I think that that point is one we have talked about before. I'm a little uncomfortable, like personally uncomfortable with always saying we can replace Kleinfelder. I mean, we got to understand we use Kleinfelder, we use Ty &amp; Bond, we use GCG, we use Beta. I mean, we're using a lot of engineering firms to a lot of things. So it's not just whether or not we replace one of them, it's what would we have a town engineer able to do across the board, like you were indicating, Mr. McKay. It's, it's not simply water and stormwater, it's, it's beyond that at this point. So I'd just like to make sure that we would look at that holistically and take a look at all the engineering services that we use. One thing about going to a meeting, there's a big, which we couldn't go to this year, but there's a big booth, stretch of booths there for engineering firms. So you don't use all of them, but pretty darn close.
When they start to know you all, that's, each one of you is individually.
Good. Mr. Germaine, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's fine. Actually, between you and Aaron, you've hit many of the points I was going to bring up. However, I have been discussing this somewhat with the town administrator. There are a number of issues I have in terms of looking at the town engineer and others who might take over other types of responsibility, trying to understand the offsets and what it's worth to us and what the funding offsets will be regardless of which direction we move versus what's absolutely necessary. I think there's more discussion that has to be taken, taken into account there. So I think this is a good start, but it just, to me, leaves open a whole series of other questions as to which, what direction do we want to take in the overall sense, over what time period and what are the offsets that are associated with it. So at this point, I look at this as a good start, but that's as far as I'm prepared to go on.
So the only way, Mr. Chair, the only way I can answer that, that question is the, these, all this was proposed last year and it never made it to the, to the select board. These, these, all, all three of these positions were, were ready for last year and I was told to hold off. I think that the more we offset and the more we wait on the procurement position, there's still a training period that's going to have to occur. So that's just put, you know, pushing the expense of, you know, the Kleinfelders still have to doing this type of work that we can do, that I believe that we can do in-house, that, that actually should be done in-house. And I think it was one of the original plans from the very beginning when we formulated the, the stormwater account, enterprise fund, that, you know, we would lean off Kleinfelder and, you know, we're into our third year of it, going into our fourth year, and we haven't done any of that yet. We haven't, we haven't moved forward with any part of the billing aspects of it. The only part that we have is the DPW, you know, staff working, you know, going out and being trained on testing and, and stuff like that. And I, and I appreciate the fact that, you know, this, this is a great start and unfortunately this is the first time you've heard about it, but it's been part of, you know, my budget presentation, you know, for the, for the two years. Thank you.
All right. So any other questions on this particular component or we can move on to other elements?
Thank you. So the general fund highlights, I would ask, and there's a, there's a breakout, but I'll read it first and then we can go down to the breakout page. Restoration of FY21 expenses and FY, you know, going back a little further, in FY18, the general fund expense line was reduced by $29,230, $273. And that breakdown was $9,400 from the transfer, transfer station tipping fees and $29,273 came from street lighting repairs. In FY21, the general fund line item expenses was again reduced by $35,400. And you can see that, that's the breakdown of what line items were reduced. It's getting very difficult to, without these funds being restored, to respond to a, a lot of complaints by the general public. I mean, I, well, the mind, the tree budget, in last year, we had a reduction of $10,000 from the tree budget. There was reductions in line painting, there was traffic lines, road maintenance, we had a reduction, physical exams, engineering services, and this was all in the general fund. This is not water sewer. This is all, all this, these cuts were to the general fund in, in those two years. Our biggest complaint now is, you know, why are we replacing the ornamental lights on, on Main Street? Well, those ornamental lights cost almost $8,500 just to purchase them each. And if somebody hits one and takes off and the police don't have time, you know, they can't get, you know, who did it, we can't go through the insurance company, you know, their insurance company to pay for these lights. Right now, we have, there's five of them down. Three of them are being, they'll be going up within, next week or the week after because they, they are insurance claims. But two of them, we could never find out what the, you know, who, who knocked them over. And when there was always money left in the, in the street lighting budget, we would always go out at the end of, the end of the fiscal, fiscal year and purchase one or two of those lights because they knocked down, I mean, they're like toothpicks. They, they just, they should have, never been put on the outside, you know, it's my opinion, they, they could have been put on the backside of the sidewalks, but, so that's just one. So I would ask at least, you know, this, for this year, that we, you know, put back into the budget $35,400. I think for the first time in the budgetary cycle I've ever, that I've been doing, the DPW water and sewer has never come back to the town asking for more funding for anything. We've always been able to set a balanced budget for the past 15 years that I've been doing this, but I think this year you're going to have problems with that. We've already seen, because of this $35,400 cut, services are going to have to, you know, the tree budget alone, this fiscal year, the tree budget as of today is.
Jim, Jim?
Yes.
I ask you to, we have somebody on the line here who should have their, their phone muted or their computer muted.
Yeah, I'm trying to mute right now.
Someone is talking to somebody in the background here, so I'd appreciate it if you're not saying, you're not speaking, but you're participating in the meeting, if you, please mute yourself. Thank you.
I think I just did, so I think we're good now.
Okay, Jim, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the, the tree budget is 50K already in the hole, so we're going to have to make those funds up somewhere. It'll probably have to come out of the cemetery expenses that will do little to, to try to balance that. So again, I would ask for, I think that's on a, I'm sorry, what type of form is that? I did a form, a Form 7, to have that, you know, those, those numbers put back up, actually a Form 6, to have those replaced. So that's it for, for that part of it, and I have one more part of the general and I can, I'll take questions. Unable to replace ornamental lights.
Do you want me to go to a different page?
No, I would, and, and lastly, yeah, if you go back up to the, the general letter that I was reading.
Okay.
The department again requests that the line item supplies road maintenance be increased an additional 50K. What is road maintenance? So with this modest increase, the department would be able to pave an additional road or repair areas not covered under the Chapter 90 rules and regulations. So to, in order to do pave a road, the road has to be 500 feet under Chapter 90, at least 500 to 800 feet in, in length before they will consider it. So the, if we look at outside of, on Main Street in front of the police fire station from Plain Street almost to Exchange Street, the reason why those two have been stopped because if you add up the two of them, they don't meet the criteria of Chapter 90 rules. So the only way they can get that paved, and it, and it has to be paved this year, we would have to rip up what was done by the school project in, in front of Park Road. So we can add the two of them together and that would give us 800 feet. This $50,000, what I would do, if approved, I would come back as I do with my paving budget, but we would look at, you know, the list of roads that we, you, meaning you, the board approves every year, which I'm ready to come to the board very shortly with that. But this $50,000 just wouldn't be put into the budget. It just wouldn't be put in there to, you know, if there was any money left over, okay, let's go and buy a snow blower or a weed whacker. This would be specifically a paving a road. I mean, I'd love for more. I think that, you know, if, if it was 100 to 200,000, we'd be able to do a lot more work. But again, like you said, incrementally starting out until, you know, we see some of the fruits of these new developments coming in, I think a $50,000 would be adequate. If, if you look at, I can give you an example of what cost $50,000 last year, and I'll, I'll do that during my presentation, road paving. The section of Time Street that we did, that was right around 50-plus thousand dollars. So I think this $50,000 will, you know, help, or at least a start, would be able to use 50 to crack seal, you know, maintain the roads that, you know, have been paved in the past. You know, in the past eight years, we've spent over three and a half to four million dollars with Chapter 90 funding, which I'll be able to show you that during, it's a whole lot of presentation, but we'll be able to show you the roads that have been paved. And most of them have been kept up in good shape, but, you know, we could use this 50 for crack sealing, we could use it for chip sealing, so on. And again, again, there's a slip in there, the right form for that, the Form 6 is in there for that. All right. So that's the end of general funds.
I'd like to ask a couple of questions and make a few observations.
Sure.
If I may.
Yes.
I want to make sure that I understand, in terms of line items in the budget, you're looking to add, there's a $20,000 line item, I'll call it the 540050, supplies road maintenance, 20,000 in the current budget. The same line item has the number of 70,000 in the FY21 budget. What is, what are we looking at for FY22? What's the recommendation?
That, that, that's a carryover and a mistake of my part, that should say FY22. So it would be with that $50,000 increase, it would bring that budget, those numbers from the 20 to 70, $70,000 for FY22.
Oh, so that's, that's to, it's a road paving item.
Yes.
And, but he's understanding that the specific line item in the budget, which can be monitored, et cetera, et cetera, to see how it's expended. Okay. Second question I have is, is with relation to trees.
Yes.
I kind of want to, we certainly understand that the tree budget, the tree maintenance budget that we have is totally inadequate. And we've had requests from the tree. Um, and, and we've had requests from the tree warden, they were able to appropriate some money in a warrant article in fall of twenty-twenty. Um, the tree warden has also come forward with a request that we consider funding another forty thousand dollars for tree removal. He's requesting a warrant article. My personal opinion is that the forty thousand dollars is well, uh, is well needed, but instead of putting it in the warrant article, it ought to go in the DPW budget. Um, so I would suggest that we take, so, I mean, that's just my view. At, at this stage of the game, the number that we had, the trees, um, in the actual budget is what, fifteen?
Yes, sir, Dr. Buck.
Yes. Well, I would propose it goes to fifty-five, um, or sixty maybe, because there's no way we can take care of this tree situation now with fifteen thousand dollars. And, um, I think for this round, we may not, we may not end up here, but my personal feeling is that tree maintenance is not, uh, um, something that just comes along once in a while. It's another example of us underinvesting in the infrastructure, if you will, um, and not getting around to these trees, uh, you know, being addressed until we, um, you know, in some warrant article. And the, the tree situation, and I know our barist, and certainly Mr. Kanaregui has been very thorough with his presentations, but we've got a serious problem here in our town and communities at large. The tree situation is really bad and it's not getting any better. So, and I'm not sure that sixty thousand's enough, but what we have right now, we've seen, is totally inadequate. Um, now I'm interested to hear from my other colleagues as to whether we'd like to deal with it through a warrant article, which, you know, pulls it out of the budget, but then we're right back where we started from next year, where the DPW budget is inadequate and therefore we have to go for some special warrant, uh, and call it out, but I don't see any reason why tree maintenance is not an element of the DPW budget. I'm sorry, it is an element, but an adequate funding, at least a better funding, should be included in this budget.
Mr. Chairman?
Jermaine?
I absolutely concur. We have, um, neglected it. I also agree it should be within DPW. That doesn't mean the tree warden doesn't put in the inputs and work with the DPW, but the overall issue is maintenance of this nature should be within DPW. Of course, that does open another issue which comes into roads, and I would propose to you that if we're going to begin trying to address these things, we need to also put in the DPW a realistic road maintenance, but we need to do it in such a way that we can be assured that what the road maintenance is, is going to be used for repaving, if you will, the roads. Um, and again, that should be within the DPW budget. It's been vastly underfunded for years. Uh, both of these, to my way of thinking, is if we look at the free cash, these come out before we worry about any allocations to other departments in the town. Um, it's, I don't see any other way that we're going to get to these if we don't begin to recognize we've got major problems in these areas and we need to begin addressing them.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Okay, well, at this point, your recommendation, I understand, but we may ask, at least for our deliberations, that we make some adjustments here. And not suggesting it's going to survive, but I think that, I agree with my colleague, Mr. Jermaine, if we don't start increasing the attention to this, just like we've done with some staffing issues, then we're never going to get there, so, um.
Chairman McCaffrey.
Yes.
I actually do have a comment. Um, so in, in terms of having something carry over and carry forward in a budget, um, you know, I, I understand because things have been underfunded for a period of time, we're kind of, you know, behind the eight ball on some of this, where the roads are in disrepair, we've got a lot of trees that, um, need to be dealt with. Wouldn't, would it be though that we'd, it's almost like we'd have to catch up first and kind of resolve the, the major issues and then have like true maintenance amounts in the DPW budget? I, I hope, I don't know if I'm making sense. Does anybody understand me?
Well, I understand, you know, from a road point of view, the last time we looked at it, to get our roads where they should be is five million dollars or more. So question, and that was, the, the estimate's probably low now, but that was the last time we looked at it. Um, it's probably more like seven or eight. To get every road that is deteriorated to the point where it's actually, you know, in good shape, move it from, you know, there's a scale from excellent to good to fair to really bad. And so, um, you know, a way to get at these things is, is, is we're going to borrow seven million dollars and we're going to pay it back over twenty years, and we're going to use it to fix the roads over the next ten. Now we've chosen not to do that. Um, and so I agree with you, trying to get a maintenance budget going when you're digging so far, you're in the hole so far that, you know, you, this is, it's still banding, but where we are right now is we're in really tough shape and, and I don't know what the right strategy is to get going. I mean, I think we know what it, what it will cost us over to fix our roads where they should be, and it's been part of the capital plan and we know what the cost would be and we would like to be able to spend, uh, between, yeah, at least my view, between the, uh, chapter ninety money and our money, six or seven hundred thousand dollars a year. And that would make a real difference over time, so that the chapter ninety money is roughly three hundred, right, Jim?
Yes, correct. Two-seventy-two, yes.
You know, and it's been holding up so far, but the fact of the matter is that the money spent on roads in this community are from chapter ninety and not from the local taxpayer, because we've had other priorities. Now I'm going off a little bit here, but I agree. I mean, what's the plan to get the roads in shape? And we do have documentation and perhaps I could, we could ask Mr. McKay, come back again and refresh that in a later meeting so that the community can see, you know, that we do have, you know, we do have, we've done a lot of the spade work, if you will, and we've got an inventory and we've got a, the general idea of our priorities. What we haven't had up till now is the money to do it, which is going to then, of course, become relevant to the conversation we're going to have next on purchasing property under sixty-one A. I mean, it's, I mean, we're all making choices, that's for sure. Okay, so, um, we'll, we'll continue on with the DPW, but just sorry to get off on a tangent here, but.
They always make us do that.
I'm not sure that the DPW director's ever come for a meeting and said, we want you to spend more.
So we're going to move into the enterprise funds, Mr. Chairman? And, uh, we're first on the agenda is the stormwater highlight. Uh, we're finally ready to, uh, put the drainage improvements for Village and Bird Street. I think if you remember, o- over the past several years, that kept on being pushed off, um, because we have a final design, we're not looking at taking any land, we're not looking in purchasing any land to, for this water to, to drain off. Um, and there's a, there's a cost estimates in there, and that total cost with engineering services is seven hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Uh, that would be, uh, borrowing, um, for that, and, uh, the Form seven, and the breakdown of the costs of actually the work is all, i- i- is in your packet. Um, but, and it, 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 just, and easy to break down, Village and Bird Street, it's, uh, at the intersection and anybody that drives down Village, they know that, um, that road floods. Um, and it's a leachant basin that goes into another leachant basin, and then it, uh, when it overflows, it floods, uh, private property out. Um, we've been, when, when we have a dry year, it, 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 it's not as bad as when we have wet years. Um, we go out there, we clean the basins out as many times as we can, but this is the final solution. Um, you know, we, we charge people for their, uh, water coming into our system and, uh, there's no reason why we should be dumping the town's water onto their property. And there's several homes on Bird Street that get severely flooded when we have excessive water coming down from Village Street in that intersection. Again, this is on the Capitol and they've heard it, and every year, I think for the past two years, I've come and taken it off because we weren't ready with the full design for this, but we are ready for this fiscal year. And again, that would be a borrowing, I think I already said that, but it, it would be a borrowing through the, uh, stormwater funds. If anybody has any questions on that, we can move on to, uh, the sewer. Um, uh, but we, for this spring and this fall, we're going to, and in summer, we, we're going to use the funds that were appropriated at the November Town Meeting for the II Phase Five. Uh, so there's no, I mean, I just put that in there as a highlight, uh, there's no funding necessary reverting, that's already been approved at the November Town Meeting, and that bid will be going out, uh, within, before the end of, uh, March. And the water highlights, well, you know, how much do we want to get it involved into, in, in, into PFAS? I have to apologize, I, I've requested and I sent an email today, find about the, for the grant for the design of, um, the treatment plant at, uh, Wells One and Two, the De Angelis Treatment Plant that are offline. Um, but if you look at this two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand, um, the first PFAS recommendation, make sure I got the right one. This is for, for the, uh, remaining wells, Wells Three, Four and Five. Kleinfelder will come in and they will do an assessment on all three of the, uh, the four remaining wells, which, um, Wells Five and Six are above the ten pots per trillion and, um, as, as well Three. Um, we're getting our results more on, on a certain day now. Um, so right now we get our testing results for Well Three and Well Five on the tenth of each month, and they are tested monthly. Um, so I don't have those results, I won't be having them, what, till Wednesday, you know, surprise the, uh, FIDCOM when I'm, I'm there on Wednesday night. But the last readings on them, on both of them, uh, Well Five dropped to nine point five, and the, uh, Well Three in February was, uh, thirteen point five, so that's still above the ten pots per trillion. Well Four is a very low number, and Well Six, we, uh, we haven't had on, online for quite a while, and we will test to get results. There is a, a, a number, uh, and it's in the eight, eight something pots per trillion. So we're looking at all the, PFAS is not going to go away, it's just not, it's not going to just disappear. The only way you can get rid of PFAS is through treatment. And what that cost is, um, I think in the, in, in the cover letter, uh, for the next one at, at Wells One and Two, we, we know is, uh, three and a half to four and a half million dollars. And, and it's, and that's Wells One and Two, and it, the four, four and a half million is if we have to build a new building to house the, uh, the treatment, which we'll, we're going to have to do that because the, the one we have is too small. Wells Three, if, if BP, uh, when we designed a treatment plant, um, we, we believe we have enough room, but this study will show, if we have enough room on site to, to put the treatment plant in. Um, so that's two-hundred-and-fifty-five, six-hundred, and that's just for the, uh, design, uh, or a study outlining the scope for, uh, these, these four wells. Um, and in that it would be, uh, they would look into where is some of the PFAS coming from? Um, they'll do hydraulic studies to see which way the water is flowing from, so give us a better idea that we might be able to, um, if it's coming from a certain area, we, we may be able to go after, um, different organizations or whatever to, uh, help offset the costs of these, uh, this very expensive project. Um, so we're not looking to, to, we're looking for the study, we're not looking for the design, yeah, we're looking for the, the, the design cost, but not the construction cost for these four wells, but, um, if they're coming in to do one, I think it'd be best for them to service and do the whole town. Let's do all six wells at one time. So if we can just let this one go for a minute, can we can go to Wells, the next one, um, for Wells One and Two, is that the one that's up there?
Uh, Jim, what page? I'm thinking, I'm on page sixteen, I don't know how far you are.
Yeah.
Give me like a.
Emergency response plan got stuck in there, is that the thirty thousand?
This is the, this is three, four, five and six, keep going?
Yep.
Okay, just yell stop. That's Water System Response Plan.
Yeah, we're going to come back to that one, that's the next one. Here we go.
All right.
So this is for the grant that we actually put in for the Mass DEP for a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars. Um, if we get that grant, I was hoping that we were able to actually have it, have Wells One and Two, the De Angelis Plant, looked at and designed, and we might have been able to go to this year for, uh, construction costs, uh, at the May Town Meeting, but that's not going to happen. Um, so if we do not get, receive the grant, we're still going to have to have the design ready, and if we get it at the, at July, we would be going for the, in November, I mean, of course we have to vet this little process out through different committees and, and the board to approve it, um, for getting the De Angelis Plant back up and running, uh, hopefully sometime in twenty-twenty-two, early twenty-twenty-three. Um, and that's what the cost of this design is, is, is one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars for Wells One and Two. And hopefully we'll get the grant and we'll be able to take that, you know, take that out of it, but as of right now, I have not heard anything. Oh, come on with that. And then lastly, uh, and then we can discuss whatever you want in the water budget, uh, this is a mandated, this is the, uh, if you remember last year, we took a risk and reliance for the, um, water system, uh, that was forty thousand dollars. This is to update, this is phase two of it, um, we have to update the emergency response plan, and again, that is a cost of thirty-seven thousand dollars, and that will update and that has to be done. Um, we're right online, we've got all the responses back from our cybersecurity, uh, assessment, and, uh, that, that part of, uh, last year's project will be filed in, in a timely manner and it will be, uh, all set with that project. We're all reviewing those, uh, what came into the cy- cybersecurity and we'll be ready to update the board on that soon, but that's something totally different than this. This is, um, updating the emergency response plan, and that's thirty thousand dollars that has to be done. The last time it was done was over, uh, ten years ago. So those are the budget priorities. Um, I don't know if anybody wants to question anything about the, and we can just quickly go through the rest of the pages about water system upgrades.
Uh, let's just, for, take a bre- a breather here, I mean, just to make sure everybody understands, uh, the water system improvements or, um, the water system requirements, you know, clearly are something that would address, some of them are, um, you know, regular, it's good to have the plan updated every ten years or so, that's a good idea, but whether or not ultimately that kind of thing is something that we'd have a, a town engineer be able to do, that's a different issue, but these projects are going to have to be funded through the water enterprise. So, um, that's just a fact, that the way these are funded, so the impact of projects like this, you know, potentially are the water rates, uh, rather than the tax base, but again, as most people will, will, will say, taxpayers and water rate pairs are basically the same folks, although there are some folks who are not on the water system, but the good news is we're going to have growth in the water system customers, so that'll help us with some of this, but these are clearly really big numbers, um, but it's something that we need to think about and it's certainly something that we have to identify as part of the capital needs of our community, and we're doing that, so thank you, Jim, for that. Uh, other questions, comments from the board members?
Not about water, I have questions later.
Well, I'm sure that's, we move, okay, fine. Jim, go on to the next one.
Yeah, so, I mean, actually, the rest of the budget presentation is, uh, the, the forms that are required that we submit, um, all the other pages, um, that's all of the, uh, capital improvement items and everything else. Um, you know, I have the, uh, if you just want to scroll through, I don't. You know, I have the, if you just want to scroll through, I don't know if you want to talk about every budget, but we have the organizational chart plan. I think we're on page like 40 or something, I'm sorry, but that's, it's all there for you to look at.
Is this?
Here we go. So that's the organizational chart. The next page is a Form Two personnel, we can move through that. That's the salaries of all DPW employees. I mean, if we look at the org chart, I break down the percentages of what department each person works for. This is a standard form and this is the right for the public to see what they're paying the staff in the DPW. I did not add any new positions to that or any salaries. This is just standard, you know, for FY22 if it goes through. The next several pages is the equipment that the taxpayers, you know, give the DPW. We have a brand new pickup truck that was given, that was allocated at the November Town Meeting, the brand new dump truck that should be here any day, any week now. And then the next page is a budget narrative. I would ask everybody if they, I'm not going to read it all, but it's a budget narrative of what roads were paved last year and what's our goal and, you know, what are our goals, you know, for the department? The next page is a breakdown, more in depth of a breakdown of the full-time employees, you know, you know, the names of each person and the breakdown of what they're getting paid out of the general fund. And that percentage is the allocation of how their pay is paid out. Next is the transfer station at the full-time, how that breakdown is for the full-time employee. These are all Form Threes. And next is the budgets for highway, street lighting, snow and ice, and the transfer station. And in the breakdown, I gave an increase of what the salary increases in the budget narrative. So that's the general fund. Next is, we get to the, what's next, what we have next is water, Water Enterprise Fund. And again, the budget narrative is there for that. The breakdown for the staffing, the full-time employees, the, there's 4.58 people, full-time employees paid out of the water budget.
Jim?
Yes?
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask you to go back to the budget page, line item budget.
Which one, Jim?
The general?
The, the highway division line item budget. Now, these numbers here, you have to go back for this transfer station, that's the DPW, the big one.
There you go.
This one?
Just to clarify, I want to make sure I understand, the earlier comments about above-level service?
Yes.
Aren't these numbers, right?
I did not add them in there, the only one I added was the 10,000 in the tree line budget. Anything in red is an increase.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Chairman McCaffrey?
Yes.
I do have, I do have some questions, I guess, here. I guess maybe more curious. And it seems like it's, it's repeated on some of the other line item pages, things like, like telephone and heat and fuel, or gas and oil, like a lot of those seem to like really jump and I was just kind of curious why.
So the vehicles, when you look at the vehicles for gas, I can, I'll address that quickly, is the gas is split on what, how that vehicle is assigned. If it's signed and purchased and maintained by Water Sewer General, it's paid, that each line item has to have that in each budget. So they can't, you can't combine the enterprise fund budgets, so like our phones, there's four phones that split through the four different departments.
Well, so for instance, specifically, so for Highway Division, it says heat and fuel and it's been zero and then it went to 10,000.
Right. So the heat and fuel is, there is no heat and fuel for the actual building itself, it's gas. So if you look at it, it's under and it's always been there. So that, those funds can be either, you know, reallocated. And with the new building, we're just going to have one heater, which is gas anyway, so that we could reallocate that 10,000 out of, out of that fuel line item and it can be readjusted to, you know, tree care or road repairs that we're, that we're looking for.
Okay.
Can I just hold off for one second there? I want everybody to know what that means. You're going to move a $10,000 number from line item, well, it doesn't have a number, but the heat and fuel line item, let's say you need to move $5,000 into street sums. How does that happen?
So what I would do is I would send, if, if, if the town administrator and the finance director left those funds in there, I would request that, and there are GL numbers that are associated with all these that, you know, that we use, I would ask that that $10,000 be sent, you know, taken from, like you just said, from heat and fuel and put it into sign and I would give them, there's a form that we actually fill out, that we would ask for that request to be done.
And where does that form go?
It goes to the approval of the town administrator and finance director.
So the funding of that movement, well, what I'm trying to get at is, I don't want the public to have the impression that the DPW director, you know, simply moves money around. I mean, that's not what happens. Line item is a line item, we're working on, you know, the final launch of the ClearGov tool, which will actually be, which is the check writing tool, so we'll be able to, people will be able to see how much money is coming out of each item. And if you move it, there is, my point is that there are, I don't want to call them safe, there are processes you have to go through to move money in a budget, you don't just do it. And I don't want to leave anybody with the impression that that's what happens. The department head finds a need, he has a responsibility to look for potential funding source. If he finds it and he thinks it's prudent, then he has to go to the town administrator and finance director to have that approved. So I'm not calling you up, I just want to make sure people understand that there are rules here, we're not just moving money around.
And I didn't mean anything malicious by asking it, I was just curious because there was zero for a while, then 10, I just wasn't sure what it was for.
Right, so with this 10,000?
I'm sorry, fingers, but I make sure people understand it actually work.
Right, so this 10,000, that 10,000 dollars has always been there, so it's, when you're looking at actual numbers, so to be safe with that, so at the end of the year, that 10,000 dollars is there, it's always there, it's been there, you know, because it shows, 000, 10,000. So that, at the, at the end of the year, it may offset another expenditure where the budget went over and the select board actually votes on that, that amount when we transfer, you know, from that line item to, and I think, Mr. McCaffrey, that's what you were asking, the 10,000 dollars that's left over at the end of the fiscal year, you will vote as the select board to use that money to pay for DPW salaries. It can't be moved into any of the enterprise funds, it can only be used to offset some of the overages in the Highway Division. And Mike, I think I explained that correctly, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, well, that becomes an inter-fund transfer, which is, there's some flexibility in the expense line. Or we're probably getting too deep into this at this point.
Right. It's a good question.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just briefly, and, you know, the finance director could correct me if I'm wrong, but like, when the, when these budgets are set by Town Meeting, there's a total expense budget. And that, that is what is set and provided for, for the, for the department. The particular lines within the expense budget are really used to break out where the intended uses of those funds are during the fiscal year and they're tracked by the finance department as well. But it is very difficult to budget all these to the dollar. So we do, we do adjustments during the year within the expense lines and those are reported back on a regular basis through the org budget reports to, to inform everyone as to these changes that are made. And it also helps to, for the departments to prepare for the next year's budget process as these numbers need to get slightly tweaked, but it's all within the expense cap as voted by Town Meeting. And hopefully I didn't cloud the waters even further, but I, I think there is, there is basically a, a legal definition of how Town Meeting establishes the different accounts. And then there's, and then there's how the town manages them during the year and reports back on, on those. But anything beyond those expenses would need to go to a, either reserve fund transfer or a, or back to Town Meeting for transfers. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Yurman?
That, of course, begs the question, why would you put 10,000 dollars in a line item that you know you're not going to be using for that particular purpose? And that's something I was not going to ask, but now that I see the explanations, the question I would ask you is, why is there 10,000 dollars there if you know that going in, there isn't heating and fuel expense?
Yep, it's a, it's a good question and it's, it's, it's always been there and it was used, you know, the only answer I can give is it was used to offset costs in other, at the end of the fiscal year. At one time, I believe that the building did have a fuel, part of it assessment, you know, that we would use fuel now, but the DPW structure itself over the years has been changed from all gas and electric, the heating and electric systems.
I, let me emphasize that in no way should I, should there be any implication of any kind of wrongdoing, that's not the purpose of the question, please understand. I'm just looking at it saying, if what we're saying is somehow it got in there, but we really need it allocated in other areas, then I would look to you, particularly the town administrator, working with you, to allocate accordingly and see if there are other line items that just, things have changed, let's put it that way, over the years and we ought to revisit it and see if there's a better allocation. Because if it does stand out there, I could look at other line items and I see some of that here also, but that's not what I want to get into at this point. I just think it's important that we understand, yes, I can understand if I allocated 15,000 for road maintenance supplies and I only spent 10,000 at the end of the year, fine, I budgeted in as well as I could and I'll reallocate them on line items. But on a zero, that does bother me a little bit when there is no reason for doing it. If on the other hand, you say, oh, well, wait a moment, we're building a new building, we know we're going to have to allocate a certain amount, and again, it's, these are just thoughts here coming to me and it makes sense. I know that we did run into that at the police, new police station, I think the fire station and maybe even the library where their heating and electrical expenses were substantially higher than they had been before. So the next year, we had to readjust things accordingly, so at any rate, enough said.
No, I think we can look at that and probably correct that, you know, this fiscal year, I can talk to Carol and Mike and we can come back and fix that this year. I agree.
So Aaron, do you have other questions at this point?
No, I think that took care of everything for me at this point. Thank you.
Okay.
So getting into the water, the Form Three is the breakdown, I think we just would pass that. In the budget, is, again, there's a couple of increases requested. What I would ask everybody to look at, this is the first year that we have put, and down at the bottom, the Farm and Water Street Tank, I mean, that was voted on at Town Meeting and that's a breakdown of each year of 214,000 dollars. We're going to leave that, that's going to be for the first time in the budget, so each year, they won't have to go back to Town Meeting for a vote on that. If you remember last year, when we did the tank assessment for this work that's being done for the FY21, that was a Town Meeting vote for the maintenance of the Farm and Water Street Tank under the contract that was just signed with SUEZ. And other highlights, the, along, LTD principal and the LTD interest, that is for the first phase of the DPW project. The treasure collector went out and bonded the project in full. And because of the rates that, you know, I believe that, you know, maybe Carol wants to talk about it quickly, but if you even want to get into it, but this is with the first year of payment. It was no, no short-term debt, our interest taken for the DPW project. And that's, you know, that's, it's an increase, but not as much as one would have expected for this, for this, their aspect of the project of their 1.3 million dollar part of the DPW project. I don't know if you have any questions, maybe if you do, Carol can answer them or I can, about the project, but we can talk about the project at the very end, but those are the costs of the DPW project, which is, there you go. So that's water.
No questions? Okay, go ahead.
Next is the budget narrative for the sewer. And just the scenario and the breakdown of, you know, full-time employees for the sewer is 3.61 full-time employees and the budget. And again, the same with the sewer, if we look at the long and the short-term debt, the sewer interest is going up, I would say, what, 45 in interest, long-term interest, 97.
Jim, what page are you on?
Imperimentally the same as the water, because it's the same rate, it's the same borrowing amount, 1.3 million for water and sewer for these both projects. There's a significant increase in the sewer O and M costs and that, we're meeting with the Charles River people this week to go over there, finalize, so those are estimated amounts. We may have more of an accurate amount by the end of the week, but don't forget now, we've added over 100 plus customers in the past year, so we're paying more to treat the sewerage because we have 125 to 130 new customers between Toll Brothers and the over 55 Acorn Place subdivision. That's sewer. And the last, I work with Betsy and every year, we do a budget narrative and I usually post this online because, you know, a lot of people have questions, what did you do, you know, what are you doing with our money with the stormwater? This is a three-page budget narrative and I would encourage everybody to take a look at it. It explains everything that we've done in the past year and some of our goals for, you know, FY22. And I believe the budget is, this budget is posted on the FinCon website. And the Form Three, we have 2.44 full-time employees and that includes everybody, that's including, you know, the department assistant, myself, and superintendent and all workers that paid out of that fund. And the budget, there's no changes in the budget. The only change is to transfer into the general fund and that went up 2.5% in the stormwater. So we're not looking for any increases on that. And that's 60 pages that I'm, sorry you had to go through, but it is the second largest budget in the town, so.
I personally delightful, but I have a question on, it's not so much the expense side, you spoke about the number of new customers on the water and sewer. We talked about sewer because there's quite a few coming up. And that's basically new construction, right? That's not too many hookups. That's not too many hookups. Is that right?
That's correct. It it out of the 125, that's also in sewer and actually there's more sewer connections because of people that are um, we've seen an influx of probably homes being sold this year, so the people that have sewer that they're actually, um I don't know what the exact number is, but if it's, every time Toll Brothers comes down and they put a foundation in the ground, they open up a uh an account with the water and sewer immediately, so they start to get charged, basic charges immediately. So if they drop off 25, which they do every other month, they drop off 25 to 40 new um permits, we open up that account immediately so we can start getting that revenue.
Okay. So the costs are going up and unfortunately the number fortunately the number of customers is going up.
Correct.
What I was leading to is the transition on the stormwater for these new buildings.
Yes.
I mean, you know, picking on Glen Allen, right?
Yep.
It was a big feat, so stormwater costs there were low. Now there's hundreds of homes. How is that translated and how, when does the stormwater bill catch up to the homeowner?
So we will go out there at, this year, we 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 just added on all the ones that we're paying into um the into the system that actually have uh permits to live in the homes. Um we will go out once a year and we'll uh survey what's there and send out the billing. I think we sent out between 75 and 80 for this fiscal this fiscal year and we will go out and do the same uh for next year, the same with Acon Place, it's not just, you know, any developments, any new homes, uh you know, we go out and re-survey them and make sure that those bills go out before their October date for the stormwater.
Okay, fine, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Don't hear any, so I guess you're going to be off the hook, Jim.
Can I just say?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Captain McInnis, I don't know if you're entertaining questions?
I'll take a question.
Okay, um uh thanks a lot, Chairman, for um considering um putting the road improvements and tree care as high as you did and maybe a a separate line item before everything comes up, that's something you've been talking about for years and I appreciate that. I'm also wondering over the last couple of meetings that um especially when I heard Ms. Erin Underhill talk about, uh don't get nervous, Erin, about for Derby Farm and the lack of uh conservation, the lack of money that conservation has, and I'm wondering if there could be a line item added to the DPW budget for, uh let's call it open space maintenance, perhaps like $20,000 to start off and it would clear some of it, it could uh put the um building back, maybe Tri-County could help doing that. Uh I think if people have, what you learned from that Zoom meeting was that we've got so much open space, but you can't do anything with it because conservation has no money and no abilities to do it, so um I'd really hope that we could answer the public by um putting in open space uh line item budget for something like that. And um my other question, if I might, is I saw a lot of money spent on school fields for water and maintenance, does the school contribute, the park fields, does the school contribute to any of that money? Um I don't need to know now, it's just a um a general question. And my my last comment is um, I I thought we were assured the last fiscal year that the um regarding the division of staff uh at the DPW, if they're doing water, sewer or um stormwater or general, was um not equal to the actual work that they do, the division. And I was um, I thought it was assured last year that that was going to be taken care of in this budget and I noticed that the DPW employee budget still has um uh employees assigned to departments, especially the water and sewer that they don't do work on, but they're being charged. And if all of a sudden the um water department, the water users are going to be hit with uh what appears to be multi-multi-million dollar repairs for uh treatment facilities that um, you know, it should be honest to the um water users what staff is actually being used for that. And um I we're reading this Thursday, the enterprise committee, and I don't know if we're going to have a definite answer if all of the work's been done for the division of ours, Mr. Chair, but I really hope so. Thanks a lot for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda.
Can I just use one more minute? I know you're late, can I just, I just want to, I was just going to close with this, I I the DPW project is moving along and I I cannot go without thanking the permanent building committee for the time and the effort that they put into that into this project. It's gone on for three years and I I I wish earlier in my career I could have worked with Mr. Clarko uh and his finesse of 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 the way he goes through one of these projects. And 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 as committee members, I you know, I see Mr. Schultz here, he's at, you know, they have a meeting once a month just to talk about DPWs though. And then we have a pre-construction meeting that Mrs. Jermaine and John Larkin and Wen um Rich Nichols can attend is there. And I I I want them to know I appreciate it, it it you know, and the staff of the DPW appreciate their uh their their expertise. I mean, um you know, we talked about a doorknob that that went on and and the safety of a doorknob for weeks and weeks and weeks and 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 it was and it was the right thing to do because we came to the final in the correct decision. I know there's a lot of time to thank people coming forward, but um I just wanted to make sure, I I want them to know that I appreciate the time and effort that they put into that project so far. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Uh I appreciate that and uh I I would also echo the fact that this team, the permanent building committee, has been working with us, helping us for many, many years and has done a great, great deal of performed a great service of this community and the DPW building is just the next one.
Correct.
And there there are going to be others. That's one team that cannot retire.
Um, thank you.
Okay, uh thanks for all, thanks for the comments from the public, a lot of us, a lot for us to consider, um but we do need to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a little bit open-ended, but I uh I wanted to make sure that we came back and discuss this again. This is with respect to the 61A property uh on Village Street. Um this is a property that I am sure that everyone remembers is one that has been um taxed as a 61A agricultural open space for many years. Uh once the taxes, once that property is put up for sale to a private party, then the 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 community has the opportunity to make a fir- write a first refusal offer to purchase the property. So we had a long uh discussion about it at prior meetings, we had a very good open forum with citizens of the community, talking a little bit about uh some of their concerns and their issues. This was a hearing that was held on March 1st. Um in terms of sort of the next steps there, I want to make sure that folks understand that the board is talking about it tonight a little bit more, taking it, taking the opportunity to uh further have further conversation about it. Uh in all likelihood, the board will um try to have, take a position on a proposal, a specific proposal, not only with respect to the property, but the financing of that potential acquisition, at least uh probably at the meeting on the 22nd, if not then the meeting on the 29th. The reason for that, of course, is that we need to be in a position of uh if we're going to um need funding for the project or the purchase, we're going to have to go to town meeting in May, so time is of the essence, but I I think at this point, we certainly have had quite a bit of uh opportunity to get input from the community. Um I'd asked my colleagues if they had anything that they'd like to add and at this point um I do feel as though I'd like to share some of the, all of the members of the board and others have received thoughtful, interesting, uh caring, committed messages from a variety of people across the community with emails and whatnot, so I think we should probably talk a little bit about some of the issues raised there too. Tonight is just further conversation because we're serious about this strategic decision um and actually taking a position will come in a week, in a couple of weeks or three weeks at the most. So with that said, Mr. Jermaine or Ms. Underhill, would you like to uh have some thoughts?
Um.
I think that was reverse order here.
Um, yes, sure. Um I did um, as everyone else did, receive a number of emails regarding the project uh or a possible land purchase. So far from what I've received, it appears that there's uh more people that have contacted me against the purchase than for the purchase. Um I was participating in the CPC committee meeting um last week and they did have a number of questions, um you know, we did have a a brief discussion about uh CPC funding and and such and it looks like there were just, there was just a lot of um, you know, outstanding questions on what a final use for the the land would be if the town was to purchase it um and so forth. Um I am personally a little um, I'm personally a little divided on it. I've, I I I think you don't really get an opportunity to secure um 23 acres very often. It's kind of like a once in a lifetime opportunity to have that land, um even if not for a very specific purpose, but you know, for open space and then the future could make a decision to use it if we needed for, you know, a building or fields or whatnot. And again, all this was was tossed around and discussed at the hearing, so I mean, it's nothing new. Um but a lot of the arguments against, I'd say, um really just spoke to people's concerns about the senior population being served and that um, you know, under the assumption that money spent on the land means um that focus wouldn't be put on that population. Um so that's the feedback I have at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Uh Mr. Jermaine, comments?
Mr. Chairman, um in part, I'll second a lot of what my colleague has just said, Erin. I've probably received about an equal number of of for and against um statements from various citizens. One of the things of the the two primary issues that seem to be being brought to my attention at any rate are what's it going to cost me, what's due to my taxes and is what's the impact on the senior center? The number of people have made it clear that they want to see something happen with the senior center. I think it's important to understand that we are progressing in the town trying to build a new senior center. There have been meetings, there are designs, there have been all sorts of things taking place. I can honestly say that our chairman is well aware of that, but the key is there are a lot of decisions that have yet to be made. Um so that is moving along and the purchase or not purchase or whatever we decide to do with this land is not at all tied to whether we do anything for the seniors and the senior center. They're pretty much totally independent projects. I would second what um Erin said about it's not often you get a chance to purchase an additional 23 acres adding to what I believe was around 26 acres adjacent to it, the town already owns, which is very nice. It's not all wetlands, there's a flood plain in there and I'd say about two-thirds of it are very nice arable land, can be used for any number of things. Um we are looking at various options at this stage as to how it would be financed, so the financing is something that is of concern. Um one has to look at it also realistically and realize that you're dealing with a million dollars and you spread it over 10 years with 3,000 to 4,000 households paying taxes on it, the amount that you're paying on an annual basis is pretty small, or if you spread it over 20 years, it's even smaller, yeah. Um I'm not saying that's precisely the way we would go, but then there's the flip side that maybe we could get some CPC or other funding, but we also have to look at the fact that if we accept funding like that, we end up with restrictions on the use of the property. Um something again to be taken into consideration, doesn't mean it's bad, it just means we need to take that into consideration. So everything we've been doing up to this point is, let's call it, part of a learning curve. We're trying to understand the options, we're trying to understand potential uses, we're trying to understand the costs and what the community feels regarding the potential purchase or sale of this land, because the other option is if we don't end up purchasing it, it will be turned into homes and yes, the developer, I believe it's Mr. Fox, it doesn't matter. The bottom line is they're going to use the best parts of that land for the development. Graciously, he's going to give us access, which is important, which would get us to the other section and a portion of that land that he purchases would be available to us for walking trails and so on, although it's pretty much in the flood plain area, which obviously you can't build on anyway. Um so it's a matter of land use, land availability and how we want to see potential for the future and that's what we're trying to assess. There's a lot more that we have to learn and we're going to be discussing it later, but I think it's important that we put all these pieces together and recognize that this is not a simple decision and I dare say, I doubt any of the three of us have come to any conclusions as yet. We're still very interested in what members and residents of our community have to say, so thank you and please keep the notes coming.
Karen McCaffrey?
Yes.
That's Karen. Uh I just wanted to point out that obviously you can see at this point that I've shared my screen and I had just put up a map that was given to us by the assessing department um and I don't know if people can tell from home, but the yellow are town-owned parcels. I know that was a bit of discussion at the hearing as to what the town already owns. Um kind of gives, we can put this up on the website as well, but I just wanted to uh put that up for you to take a look at.
Very good, thank you, that's actually helpful. Again, uh we've tried to provide appropriate level of mapping and whatnot, um so this is very helpful. Um and I think that uh these are the kinds of things that people have been raising with the select board through emails and questions. Um certainly folks have asked about, it is a million dollars, it it doesn't necessarily um conclude spending money on other things, but if you do, ultimately, at the end of the day, if you spend the money on this property, then there's going to be something you don't do because the amount of money available is not limitless. Um I do think that there there's some questions that come out as to um, you know, whether or not, and this goes back to a comment made earlier tonight even, you know, whether or not uh we should be adding this kind of space when there's no budget anywhere for even maintaining the the conservation land that we have, whether it's maintaining fields, whether it's maintaining walking trails. And as we all know, for example, on this property, there's a fair amount of, I'll call it, excess material that would have to be removed um to make it usable even as a a walking trail. So um we've certainly had folks who have raised the issue that we'd be better positioned uh devoting some money to maintaining the conservation land that we have or improving it rather than investing it in another piece of property that we don't have the resources to improve. Um others have said it is it is a once in a lifetime opportunity, it doesn't commit you to anything at the outset, it leaves you with complete flexibility unless, of course, you purchase it with community preservation funds and then it is restricted to um to recreation use and passive uh conservation, which means you couldn't build a school on it, for example, or a or a or a senior center or anything. It's only, only if we acquire it with uh, you know, general fund money can we use it for any purpose. Um there's been questions raised that did come up at the meeting about the sewer, extending the sewer to that particular property. If in fact the developer goes forward and decides to build on that property, did come up that there's a sewer issue that would have to be addressed, that's something that the developer would have to address if in fact that property ended up being developed. Um there's some folks who do do want us to understand that um the projected project might be beneficial to folks who are looking for an over 55 residence, it might be a little less expensive than some of the other ones that are currently on the market in this town. on the market in this town. Not calling it any particular neighborhood, but it does, it has raised, there's a threat certainly coming from our community about affordable housing. Now, affordable is always in the eye of the beholder. It's not 40B affordable that this developer is talking about, but it is perhaps more reasonably priced for some folks who would like to stay in our community and, you know, downsize, if you will. There are certainly folks who have asked questions about what is the commitment of this developer to the plan that he shared with the community at the hearing. I think it's fair to say that this is clearly his intent. It is a very preliminary plan. What he would actually end up doing with it is very dependent on what a planning board might work with him on, special permits and whatnot. The use of open space there isn't, is, is, dare I say, not because he's a generous and warm, caring human being, although he may well be, but it is to achieve the density of the, of the buildings so that he can get 40 some odd residences on that property. So, again, what I'm trying to do, again, as my colleagues, is share some of the feedback that we've been getting from the community and encourage people to continue to weigh in on this because it is something that's very important. And I do think, I'll speak for myself, we're trying to weigh alternative uses of money and alternative uses of what's best for the, for the community. Not to just reflect on, you know, years gone by, but, you know, 30 or 40 years ago, maybe it's closer to 50 now, maybe it's 40. Some members of this community decided that when the property at Oak Grove went for sale, it was in the best interest of our town to buy it for open space and that's what happened. 10 years later or so, the property across the street came up to market, which was the Cassidy Farm. And again, the community decided that that particular piece of land was, was open space that we wanted to keep. Now, some would argue today that the Oak Grove Farm gets much more use largely because of the willingness of certain people to volunteer and keep the building going, whereas Cassidy is essentially, you know, not used that often, although it gets some use. Now, I do want to share with folks the fact that one of the potential sites for a new senior center could be the Cassidy Farm land, a portion of the land which is owned as a municipal property rather than land acquired and state funded. So, it's not that this property is not being looked at for other uses because it is. The only point I'm making is, and then there's another parcel down the, down the street that we're near, where people in the past looked at these opportunities and they were expensive then, and they decided they were going to bite the bullet and buy the property because it was an investment in the future. And that's what happened. Not arguing that that's what should happen here, but that's certainly what you have to consider when you're looking at the purchase of a parcel of land, which you may not be able to utilize immediately. The other option, of course, for the board to consider, I suppose, is looking to borrow more than half a million dollars. Maybe enough money to clean the property up or make some trails or whatever. Now, that's not, that's not something we've been considering up till now, but it's certainly something we ought to talk about. It's, on the other hand, you know, I think my colleagues and I have all heard from our neighbors and friends and through these emails that people are continuing to be concerned about the tax burden in our community. At this stage of the game, what we're talking about is utilizing what we call the debt ceiling we already have to potentially fund this project so it would not require an override. And I'm ahead of myself here, I don't particularly favor a debt exclusion override for this property. I think there's enough debt exclusion out there. If we can fit this within the budget, that's a much better opportunity for us to, by budget, I mean, if we were to borrow the money, we'd have to include in the budget the money we'd have to pay off each year to pay off the bond. And if it's a 20-year bond, it's more in the nature of $50,000 to $60,000 a year that we'd have to appropriate over the next 20 years to pay off the bond. So, again, there's nothing to decide tonight. I think it's important for the community to understand, as my colleagues have indicated, that we are taking this input, not just at the hearing, but tonight and over the weeks that we've been getting information and feedback from our, from our constituents out there in the community. We look forward to continuing to get that. I'm going to suggest, of course, that we have, you know, take some positions over the next couple of weeks and put a real proposal in front of folks. And if we decide to go to town meeting, then we plan to hold not a hearing, but a forum, if you will, on specific proposal. Because it's not only what we're, how we're going to buy it, but what it costs, et cetera, et cetera. And we're not quite at that point yet because we haven't run all the numbers or looked at all the, all the options that we might have. Including looking to speak with the community preservation folks to determine whether there are, there's funds available there to help defray the cost, knowing full well that if you go that route, then there is some restriction that is going to be on some or all of the property, so.
Karen McCaffrey?
Yes.
If I may, the CPC, for the most part, they all spoke to the project. Most of, most if not all of them did not recommend using CPC funds for the, the purchase because of the restrictions. They also put a placeholder though, placeholder meeting for March 25th in the event we did want to ask them about funding.
Okay, good, thank you for sharing that. And certainly if this board feels as though it wants to move forward with any acquisition, we then have to also determine how much flexibility we might want to have in the event that the purchase occurs. And the maximum amount of flexibility comes from funding it through the general fund, if you will, rather than utilizing some special, special funding. Okay, with that, I think that that's kind of what I want to achieve tonight and encourage folks to continue to reach out to the board members. And we're trying to get people's input. Whatever happens at the end of the day, the decision ultimately as to what to do will rest with the citizens of the community. If there is a proposal to acquire the property under the current debt ceiling, then that would require a, an appropriation by the town meeting in May and it would require the town meeting to approve it by a two-thirds vote because that's what is necessary for a borrowing. So, I think that the most likely scenario at this point is if we decide to move forward, then it will go to town meeting and town meeting will make the decision as to what the community wants to do. But I think this board and the other committees that have been working on this will be in a position, if we decide to go that route, to present the community with a proposal, not with a multiple choice question. We will recommend what we think is best and then the community will have, through the town meeting, the opportunity to make the decision, so. With that said, please keep the information coming. We certainly want to consider everything and we want to encourage people to ask not just the friendly questions, but the tough ones too. One last thing I wanted to mention that we all received was some correspondence from a Millis resident. It took some time to relate her position to work that was done on the Millis Resiliency and Open Space Plan, which was a study done with a grant from Metropolitan Planning Council, which not only looked at some issues, but also surveyed folks. And that particular individual who wrote, mentioned a couple of the goals that were included in that open space plan, which included, you know, maintaining the, finding open space, maintaining the rural nature of the community, looking to find ways to make sure that the water table and whatnot are protected. So, you know, there is some thinking going on at the higher level, at the more broad strategic level, which would indicate that this, this particular parcel does serve some of the objectives identified in that broader base study. So, I would ask, I would urge people if they wanted to take a look at that, to go ahead and do so, it's on the website. Maybe there's some thinking there that might be helpful in helping us to make our decision, but this is not going to be something that's going to be decided in a vacuum because it's going to relate to not only what we want this community to be, what it is, what we want it to be, but how it relates to some of the broader issues that we wanted to address to make sure that this community continues to be a strong community and a, a good place for people to live, so. With that said, I appreciate folks listening. Again, I ask you to send in your comments and our goal here is, in the short run, to make this as interactive with as much input from the community as we can encourage. Wish we were going to have a meeting at the high school auditorium where hundreds of people could come and talk to each other, but that's not going to happen, so let's work to do it this way. Okay, that, it concludes that part of the conversation. I'd like to move to the next item on our agenda, which we have Town Council here. This is an opportunity to talk about the cannabis delivery business, which is a new flavor of marijuana establishments. We're now moving to the potential for revenue growth rather than expense growth. But we had a little bit of conversation about this the last time, about the two different kinds of businesses that we're talking about and how the community would make rational decisions with respect to regulating those businesses, were they to come to Millis. So, Kate Federoff is here. Maybe Kate, you could just quickly outline for us the subject areas and have a little conversation about what we think we might want to do to make sure that this board and the planning board, if zoning is appropriate, has the opportunity to make some rational decisions about how we'd like to regulate these businesses should they come to Millis.
Yes, absolutely. And you're right, just when we thought we were done with marijuana, we're back on marijuana, so. It's, it's a never-ending thing. But we do have two new types of marijuana establishments. One is the delivery or courier and one is, I'm going to call it, a warehouse delivery operation. So, the difference being, the courier just delivers the marijuana. So, they pick it up from a retailer and they deliver it to the consumer, just like you would pick up your, have Grubhub pick up your pizza at the pizza joint and deliver it to a home. So, they just provide the actual transportation service. Whereas we'll call the warehouse operator, it's a delivery operator, and we'll call that company a little bit different because they take the marijuana and they can repackage it as their own. So, they need more of a facility than a courier would. The courier still needs, in my mind, a facility, but there's so much stuff that can be done remotely that, less so. So, you have to still have the same security protocols in terms of having cameras and safe-to-sale tracking and all of those things. So, I would imagine that would have to be housed somewhere, so, but I imagine a smaller room. Whereas the warehouse operator actually can take the marijuana and just repackage it as if it were their own marijuana that they developed. So, they definitely need a facility with full security and all of those things that a manufacturer would need, a cultivator would need, any of those other entities would need. So, I took a look at, to try to get my arms around what, how Millis should react, I took a look at your bylaws and they're actually really pretty simple. So, you make a distinction in the number of retailers that are permitted within the town, but other than that, you really just have a special permit process and all the facilities are allowed in the same zone, the IP2, so the industrial zone, but the IP2 portion of that. And they go to the planning board and the beauty of the special permit is the same for this group as it is for the other groups, that you can condition around a lot of kind of unique aspects of the property. So, you can adjust for parking, you can adjust for loading, you can adjust for, you know, this particular neighbor, you know, who owns a dog shop might be more impacted than another neighbor because of the distance. So, you can condition around that. So, there's a lot of flexibility in your bylaw, but it's also quite simple. So, probably if the town were to embrace this type of establishment, the best bet would be just to add that as a definition to the zoning bylaw or, or include it as one of the marijuana establishments allowed by special permit in the IP2 zone. Now, the other thing to, to bear in mind is marijuana establishments, existing marijuana establishments will have the opportunity to get multiple licenses. So, just like you can have a cultivator slash manufacturer slash retail license as an entity, you could do the same thing. So, we'll think about our existing operators now. So, Ellen, she's not a social equity applicant, so she wouldn't be entitled to it yet because she's foreclosed that opportunity for the next three years. But there could be other applicants that, that have that social equity piece and they could just add an additional license. That's the other piece that you may want to consider.
Well, let me just clarify from my own thinking. First of all, the, the courier, well, I'll call it the delivery operator, someone who's going to locate in a building somewhere, they are not retailers.
Right. You can't, unless you have a marijuana retail license, you can't have a brick and mortar operation in that I, as the consumer, can knock on the door and get marijuana. I would have to order that online and the delivery person delivers it to my house. So, they are separate and distinct from retailers, where, where customers can actually enter the building.
So, we have a zoning bylaw which essentially limits the retailer, the retail store to one. It's the lesser of 25%, whatever, so it's one. So, that limitation does not restrict any of these businesses.
That's correct.
So, the other zoning bylaw that we have, which is actually, has two, had two components to it, there's a medical marijuana bylaw, which this doesn't affect, because I'm assuming we're not bringing medical marijuana. I don't know that, but, not yet, anyway. And secondly, we have those businesses that, well, we're going to have at least one cultivator, probably two, we're going to have a manufacturer. They are all, and also, by the way, the retail establishment and the medical marijuana establishment are restricted more by location rather than our ability to say we only want one of them. Or, there's a practical limitation on a cultivator in the sense that it's a big building, unless we get in now, of course, we start to read about some of the people who grow marijuana outdoors and they want some changes. I mean, folks should understand, this is, this is an evolving situation here. You know, was unanticipated, you know, three months ago, four months ago, that the delivery thing would sort of fall upon us, but CCC went off and did its thing. Now, what we, if we do nothing in terms of additional regulation, then one of these businesses would have to, I believe, go to the planning board, like I said, and get a special permit, open a building, if you will, in the IP2 district. So, we're not without some, because they are a medical, they are a marijuana establishment, right?
Right. So, yeah, so if, if you do absolutely nothing in the town of Millis, So, yeah, so the, if, if you do absolutely nothing in the town of Milis, um the reality is you're left with your bylaw unattended to, right? So, so what happens is a very intelligent lawyer comes along and says, hey, you allow marijuana establishments. Marijuana establishments under the law are defined as marijuana retailers, cultivators, manufacturers, testing facilities, and, here you have it, the catch-all, um any other marijuana establishment. So, so a very intelligent lawyer could come along and say, hey, you allow marijuana in the town of Milis, um and, and we're just going to um wedge our way in there. Um and I think there, there is a risk to say, well, I mean, now, this is a legitimate legal argument that we make. Hey, we didn't contemplate delivery when we enacted our marijuana bylaw because, why? It didn't exist, right? So we always presumed that we were going to be given another shot at the apple to say, okay, we're going to address delivery however we want. And um now that option is before you, and if you don't take that option, then someone's going to interpret your bylaw for you.
Mr. Chair?
So you can make it express or you can leave it out there.
But if, if we want to make it express, then we're going to have to propose a zoning bylaw change for the May Town meeting, which would, we, by, and that seems to me, what you're saying is a simple definitional expansion. Marijuana, and is this, this, this plus delivery plus courier, and then any other pocket maybe thing that the CCC comes up with in the future.
Right, and maybe, maybe we're more careful to not include that other in there because we have, just think, you know, a couple of years down the road, we have uh social consumption, which is your marijuana cafe, um that's a whole nother process that I don't want people at home to be worried about, so, because that follows a different process for approval because of the, you know, it's, it's much different. So um but, you know, you don't want, I can't conceive of what another other will be, but we could be very careful in calculating in our definition this time around. Um, yes.
Well, let me ask, and I want my colleagues to weigh in, assuming for the sake of argument that what we would like to do is limit this, the maximum extent possible, we don't want them.
Right.
What do we do?
So, that's really clear in the legislation and this is not even having to do with the regulations. So the process for saying no um used to depend upon how you originally voted to legalize marijuana or not. If you were a yes town, you had um a different process than if you were a no town. All of that changed in December of 2019 because that was sort of the sunset, and now everyone, regardless of your vote on marijuana, has to follow the same process to do, to prohibit something new. So obviously, whatever you did in the past is fine, that's protected, but um the process is twofold, town meeting vote, ballot measure.
That's to ban the businesses from coming to the community.
To ban delivery. You can ban any type of marijuana business, whether it be retailer, manufacturer, et cetera, including you can ban specifically delivery, um but uh you have to follow that two-pronged process. Now, the caveat with delivery is this, and, and this is, this is to make everyone's heads explode a little bit further, because if you ban delivery operations, that's banning the operation in the town, right? So it's saying, delivery operator, you can't be housed in the town of Milis. That said, what the regulations say is delivery itself is allowed in any town where retail's allowed. So Milis, we obviously allow retail, um and so anyone can be receiving deliveries in their homes. So for those folks at home who are thinking that they don't want the trucks coming into the town, they don't want their neighbor, because they're concerned about security, to be getting marijuana delivered to their house, it's not necessarily going to be prohibited. I mean, it's, well, it's not prohibited. It's, it's not something that you can prohibit because someone from Medway or Medfield or Mil, uh, you know, some other med.
They, they banned it.
They, okay, so those banned, who's, who's, who's not banned around, you guys?
Franklin.
Hollison.
Or Franklin, yeah.
Say Sharon.
Sharon, okay. So if they have a delivery, delivery operation out of Sharon, the Sharon entity can drive their trucks into the town of Milis and ring your doorbell and deliver your marijuana to your house. The difference is, you won't get this cap, uh, the, the payments for it, town of Milis.
But that, that person cannot deliver in Medfield, which has banned retail sales.
That's right.
Right?
Yes. Unless Medfield takes an affirmative action to say, we'll allow delivery in our quarters.
Right, yeah, okay.
Probably not.
Well, okay, one other question, then, uh certainly will allow my colleagues to weigh in too. This relates to the other regulatory framework that we have, in other words, relating to licensing by the board, licensed by the Board of Health, and of course, the special permit.
That's right.
So address those things as well.
Yes, yes. So they're still going to need an HCA from the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Health has their own set of regulations to ensure that there's no diversion to minors or, and folks that shouldn't be receiving the marijuana, et cetera. Yes, all of those layers of protection will remain.
Okay, so there may be several things we've got to change, or if it's simply a definitional thing, we want to make sure that each of those elements of our regulatory framework are up to the task.
Yes.
Uh, hey, now, Mr. Jermaine, Ms. Underhill, sorry to dominate this thing, but this has been my favorite subject since I got on the board, little did I know.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Your wonderful favorite thing.
Ms. Federoff, I guess the concern I have is it's one thing to leave a bylaw general. The moment you begin getting into specificity, you're getting into areas where you begin to also open doors, in my estimation, because the more specific you get, the more you open an opportunity for somebody to find a way in that you hadn't anticipated. And so the concern I have is to make an adjustment in the bylaws, it's general enough to meet the needs we have to, for some restriction, without making it so specific that we end up opening doors that were never intended because of the specificity at this time as we understand it, but may not hold in the future. I'm very concerned about that, that my experience to date is you tend to think you're precluding something and in the end, you actually created a monster that wasn't intended.
I have seen monsters created, Mr. Jermaine, you are right. Um there, the idea is to say, um, so in Milis, I believe it is a prohibited unless permitted kind of bylaw. Um so, and, and that's generally how these bylaws lie. So, right, you could say nothing and kind of rely on that aspect. The difference is with zoning is that you, it's impossible to enumerate everything, meaning um you can allow, just, let's talk about not marijuana, just talk about retail generally. You're not going to enumerate shoe store, um, you know, toy store, all of those, you're just going to say retail. So then when this other strange thing comes in, it's some other kind of store that I don't, I don't know necessarily, can't think of something now, adult store or something like that, um, something that people maybe don't want. Um, there could be an argument made that I'm a store just like anyone else, I'm the same kind of store. So when you try to refine that definition, the idea is to preclude what you don't want because people will try to shoehorn if it's general into the definition, if you know what I'm saying.
Well, I'm.
I mean, adult stores, everyone's regulated, but that's a bad example, but, you know.
I understand what you're saying. The question then I would ask you is if, if I were to say to you, and I'm not a lawyer, if I were to say to you, fine, take the bylaw we have.
Yes.
You understand the concern we have and add to it wording that's restrictive but not so, so construed as to allow the barn door to open at another location that we hadn't anticipated.
Yes.
Is it possible you can write something for us to that degree?
I believe I could, because really what we're doing is, if, if, I'm going to read the bylaw to you. So there are two pieces. When you go to the special permit section, um there's the purpose, general regulations, and then they have location, and the first item listed is marijuana retailers, right? And they reference the CMR in that definition. What's a marijuana retailer? And luckily, to your point, Mr. Jermaine, um they, the CCC was really careful to say delivery isn't retail, even though, I mean, if you think about it in the, in the normal sense, you would think of that it's a retail transaction, you know? But, so thank goodness they didn't do that, and it gave the limitation. Then the second piece is marijuana establishments. Other than marijuana retailers may not be located within blah, 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 and it lists a whole uh number of protected uses, right? So the question is, what's marijuana establishments? If we look at the, what happens is when you don't define that in your bylaw and you actually don't have a definition of marijuana establishments, you look to the general laws as to what the meaning is, and that's where the other comes in, right? So that's where it's retailers, manufacturers, um testing facilities and cultivators, and other. So in our definition, we could say marijuana establishments are retailers, manufacturers, cultivators, um testing facilities, and delivery operators. So it's more narrow than what the general laws provide. So then when the next other comes, which I don't know what that would be, I mean, airplanes flying around marijuana, I have no idea, we can say, the other doesn't exist in our bylaw, so you're precluded if you're not one of these five that we really thought about. And that's exactly what I would do, I would just change the definition to add a definition of what marijuana establishments are. And then I'm not tinkering with the stuff that you've already really thought about, like I want to protect these facilities from being near a library or a school or a childcare facility. You've already spent a lot of time thinking about that and I'm not going to tinker with that. So that would be my idea, just to add that definition.
I like that idea, I like that concept. Okay, I won't take any more time.
Okay.
Thank you.
I appreciate that comment, though. You're keeping me on my toes.
Um, yes, so I think I have a few questions. So are we, I'm using like a royal we here, is, are we, like, the board implying that we do not want to allow delivery? Is that kind of where we're going with this at the moment? Meaning, the language that um Kate just used would be to probably exclude delivery from the definition.
No.
No? Okay, so we're talking about adding deliveries to the definition, and that would exclude anything else that we haven't thought of?
Yeah, that was my idea, unless you're telling me you want to prohibit delivery.
Well, I don't, I don't know how much sense that makes, since they can still deliver to us.
Right.
Um, so, you know, I, I don't know if that would even be worth it, but um, so, and I don't want to, you know, make this a long conversation, but the, so if some, if, if there were to be a delivery service that repackages, um, you mentioned they, they'd have an HCA like the other facilities would, but.
Yes.
Didn't, did we talk about before that there would be no monetary um benefit to the town?
So under an HCA, um you still get this, the community impact payment. So you have the right to negotiate 3% of gross sales uh for community impact, that's the max cap you can make, and they've made no modification of that.
Okay.
The piece that I'm not 100% sure on with the courier, so, so the courier is the ones who don't repackage, you're not asking about them, because they're just giving like the $5 or whatever, maybe it's $20, I don't know, to deliver the marijuana. Um, but the ones that repackage, you have the right to get the gross sales, right? The piece I am unsure of, and I still don't have a clear answer, is the tax piece. So, you know, with your marijuana retailer, to the extent you can get 3% of um gross sales for a community impact, but you get another 3% on local sales tax, so you get a total of 6%. I'm not sure if that second 3% will come to you.
Because taxes probably already paid, like, the first time, wherever somebody purchased it from in the first place?
Yeah, so that, this is why I'm thinking that you actually may get it, Erin, because um the, the delivery operator is going to purchase the marijuana from the cultivator or from the manufacturer or another retail facility at the wholesale price.
Oh.
And then they transfer it to the consumer, so I don't see how they can't charge the retail sales tax on them, but it's just something that hasn't been fully identified yet.
Okay.
That I know of.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
So that means that we do, we have adopted 3% sales tax.
Yes.
Is the language used enough to cover the potential.
Yes.
For this delivery, okay.
Yes, because that's just adoption of a local, local option statute, and they haven't modified that statute, and it just says retail sales of marijuana.
Okay, so really, it's about a business that decides to locate here is going to have a building where they're repack, I mean, I'm just going to take an example, which may not happen, because we know that we have an HCA with a manufacturer, right, who is going to be located in the coal building, in a portion of the coal manufacturing, that's where they're going.
Yes.
And they are, I believe, they were a social equity applicant, right?
I think they were, I think they were, Jim, yeah.
Does that mean they will qualify as a potential delivery business?
They can qualify if they pass the CCC standards and all that jazz. Um, and if they were to desire it, they would have to go through the board, even though they have an existing HCA, the way that we wrote our HCA was we limited the operations to their specific license, so they'd have to come back to you for another HCA.
So it's not totally out of our own reason that there is a business you might see doing that, uh, doesn't seem to be the case with, she doesn't seem to be too interested in, plus she's not a social equity, at least so far.
She can't qualify with her current makeup, to the best of my knowledge, yes, for three years.
Yeah, but I can't believe that three years later, every retail will have delivery. I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but why wouldn't they?
Right.
Okay, well, that's way beyond our issue tonight. So I guess, um, I, I think what I'd like to ask town council tonight is if you could prepare some sample language for us that we might consider at our next meeting?
Yes.
I think you're hearing from the board that we'd like to include it, um, so that anybody coming to town is put on notice that there is a regulation here, um, but in the simplest way, so that our intent really is to regulate these in the same way we regulate the other businesses.
Absolutely.
And if you could also take a look at the, um, you know, our licensing.
The general bylaw, yes.
Sure that we don't need to check, because whatever we want to do, I think we want to do it for the May Town meeting. Sure that we don't need to check, because whatever we want to do, I think we want to do it for the Maytown meeting.
Yep, I can get that done for the next meeting, which is a week or two weeks from now.
The 22nd, Kate.
And Erin, if you could, I could ask you just to send a note to the planning board, letting them know that we'll probably be coming to them after that meeting with a proposed bylaw, zoning bylaw relative to this delivery business? Just to give them a heads up, that's all. Because it's going to have to go to them, too.
Yeah, they have to have a hearing.
Okay. All right, any other questions for Town Council this evening? Thank you very much. You're free to stay for the rest of the meeting. You're free to go.
Although you're fascinating, I, I appreciate being let go.
Kate's pillow is calling.
Guys, thank you so much for having me.
Kate, Kate, you missed the most exciting part of the meeting.
Oh.
Was it?
6:30 is 7 o'clock. We'll get back to you.
Yeah.
Almost nothing.
Yeah, we, we had a good half hour to 40 minutes of technical difficulties today, so. That's just how life goes. We won't, we won't point any fingers. We'll just say it happened.
You know what, Karen, provided you're not a cat in this image, I say you get a full free pass for any technical difficulties.
I think so, too. I think so, too.
Good night.
If I ever come on as a cat, someone needs to say, Karen, your time is done.
Done.
You're done.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night, Kate.
All right, Kate, next item on the agenda is the town meeting warrant, next two items.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Gesinski, it says me, but this is really your, your time. Your time to shine.
I've been quiet for so long. So, Mr. Chairman, just in the interest of time, I was merely going to discuss briefly the items that have been put in as potential articles for consideration for the board and not go over the articles that you've already discussed at this point, unless there's specific questions. Our intention at this point is to provide a, a draft, a full draft warrant to the board at your next meeting on March 22nd with all the language and details that, that will be available at that time. But just to touch briefly upon items that were not in the original article list you received a few weeks ago, we'll start with, again, these were put in as just draft locations within the, within the article list. If you look at the highlighted ones, item four and item five have to do with collective bargaining agreements that will conclude or expire at the end of June. And these would allow for possible ratification of those agreements, should they be done at the time of town meeting, which is, which is a big if at this point. But certainly, we want to have those there if we are ready to take that action in regards to those agreements. So that's both the SEIU and the firefighters' local 4704. So I don't know if there are any questions on those two. The board's aware that these are items that the board is, is, will be working on over the next several months. Jumping down to items 16, 17, and 18, these are items that, capital items that have been submitted by the school department. I would expect that items 16 and 17 will actually be rolled into Article 15 as their, you know, prior year approved leases. But we just wanted to highlight those to let the board know that those have been submitted and will, should find their way into the, into article, draft Article 15, the capital article. Article 18 is a new computer lease submitted by the school and as recommended by Town Council, new leases are standalone articles because they're considering, considered borrowing, which requires special authorization of town meeting by a two-thirds vote. Article 24, I don't think I'll need to go over that in depth. The board just covered that, the cannabis delivery, possible zoning bylaw amendment to address issues surrounding that. Item 31 would be a possibility of a pilot agreement for the solar project that is being worked on right now by our energy manager as well as school officials for a solar energy system on the roof of the New Clyde Brown Elementary. So it's a possibility. We'll have a pilot agreement, a draft pilot agreement for the board to review and possibly have on the spring town meeting. So I believe that's all the new items and articles that we have at this point. I wanted to answer any questions that the board has in regards to those and if there's any other issues regarding the, the draft warrant article list at this point. You're muted.
I got multiple. We did have a request from the tree warden to put a warrant article in. We talked about this in, in the sense, in the context of actually putting it in the DPW budget. I don't want to preclude going and getting the money, so I don't know if it makes sense just for now, leave it in there until the budget discussion is completed with the, with you and us and the FinCom. I don't know how my other colleagues feel, but I, I don't want to lose this just because of a, you know, a bookkeeping or an entry problem.
Certainly, we can put that back in the list if you want, just as a, as a placeholder there to make sure that it's addressed in, in one part of the process or another.
I agree.
Well, I agree. I would also submit that if we're going to do that, we ought to put in something for roads.
All right, because I'm muted. Okay, well, Mr. McKay had a proposal, right? And would you feel as though we should put in two warrant articles, one for roads and one for trees? I don't want to lose it. I, I'm with you, Pete, and Erin, I don't want to lose this. I mean, I'm hoping that we convince the FinCom and others that the way to do it is through the budget, but if we don't, we can't treat it in particular, so.
I'm actually not sure that through the budget is the, the best way to go. You know, well, I realize that it's going to take a lot of time to resolve a lot of these issues like trees and roads, for instance, but once you add it to the budget, it's now part of the budget. Like, I would, I would think that we'd have something, I mean, obviously, it's a crazy wish list, but I think we address the problems we have and then have a reasonable, like, maintenance budget. You know what I mean?
Well, I would concur, but if we have it in both places and we get it in the budget, great, take it off, we don't, we'll say it's moot.
Well, why don't we put, Mike, why don't we add two warrant articles? One would be a highway, a road repair article and a tree maintenance article. And then they're there.
The board, the board would always make the decision right before you approve and sign the warrant, whether or not to leave them on there or remove them based on where we are in the budget process for Article 3, the operating budget.
Okay.
So that way we'll cover it, and if it's unknown, you could leave them there just to pass over at town meeting if they're covered somewhere else. So that's certainly, it's, it's quite easy. We can add them right back on, right onto the, onto the draft, the list.
Well, we'll be looking at this again on next week, or next, two weeks from now, but I don't want to lose it, so why don't just put them on? And then, then we have, hopefully, we'll have had the opportunity to think through what the right approach is here.
Do we have to open and close this again right now?
Yeah.
Um, if, I mean, it, it's, it's up to you. You can choose to do that in two weeks at your next meeting. If you want me to just update this and bring it back, you, you don't have to, you don't have to do it this evening. It's whatever the board's comfortable with. I can include these in the updated actual draft in two weeks, which will include the language of all the articles, and you could vote to accept those additional articles at that meeting. I'd go along with that.
Okay, well, why don't we do that? You, you have these, we're aware of them. Two others that you think we're thinking of, and then we'll reopen.
I will add that to your draft for your meeting in two weeks, and you could vote to add those to the warrant at your meeting on the 22nd.
Okay, very good. So we'll not open and we'll not close, but we'll discuss. Okay, next item is the FY22 COLA for non-union personnel.
Mr. Chairman, I did put a memo in the board's packet in regards to this. As you know, every year around this time, the board votes upon a COLA to be utilized for, for budget purposes for all non-union, non-contract town employees for the ensuing fiscal year. Based upon a review of the COLAs or the increases that are factored in to the various union contracts of the community, I am recommending a 2.5% COLA for all personnel plan employees for fiscal year 2022. And I think that, that's an appropriate and fair number based on both the status of the, of the union contracts as well as the financial condition of the town.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Jermaine?
Mr. Gesinski, I have a question. It says here the school increases range from 2.5% to 6%. I just got to ask, and don't get me wrong, but 6% COLA, what's going on in the economy right now seems a little on the high side. In fact, I think the acting IT director would like to see some of that.
Well, I, I already indicated I would support doubling your salary in that role. So I think in that particular case, there was a, a special adjustment for a certain class of employees based on, it was a one-time, based on a review and negotiation. It wasn't so much a COLA as it was a, a market adjustment. But I would, I would defer that to, to the school administration, the questions on it. But I believe most of their contracts are the 2.5% to 3%.
Okay, you can understand the concern and how, you know, somebody's going to have to explain it to the town if it's.
Are there any other questions? As I said, I think for the purposes of budgeting and, and being able to move forward with the finance committee and the budget process, this essentially affects only four full-time employees and a number of, of part-time employees.
Chairman McCaffrey, if you don't have a question, I'm happy to make a motion.
I have no questions. Thanks. Go ahead.
Okay, I move that the board vote to establish a 2.5% COLA for all personnel plan employees for fiscal year 2022.
I, I think we have, what is this, for all non-union? Non-union personnel, personnel plan, 2.5%? And to agree that the schools have a range of 2.5% to 6%.
No, no, we don't, oh, no, no, we're not schools. That, that's not.
I understand, but it says in this memo that that's what we're supposedly agreeing with.
No, you're not, you're not voting, I'm sorry, if there's.
Okay, that's what I understood. That's what I was bothered by.
Okay, I simply put that there to just, as a comparison that the police and DPW unions have a 2.5% and then the school unions range from 2.5% to 6%, and that's the basis upon which I'm recommending the 2.5% for non-union. I apologize if my memo was a bit confusing.
That's what I was most bothered with, was are we.
You're not acting on that. You're only acting on the 2.5% for the, for the personnel plan employees.
It's all right, Mr. Chair.
I'll second Erin's motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just quickly, before you finish the motion, and I'm sorry, I'm through you, Mike. Is this for, so it's 2.5% for personnel plan employees not to include the appointed specials on the second page, or only, or for everything?
I think it was to include, it was to include the, the specials as part of the whole personnel plan adjustment.
Okay, thank you.
And part of, part of, this is part of the part-time and stipend deployments.
Okay, making sure.
So it's not just four people, is your point, Karen?
No, only four full-time people, but then a number of other part-time stipend people. That, it's, it's, those folks have a much lower level of pay that this is impacting.
Right.
Well, the personnel plan is a term of art. It's defined as people covered by the personnel plan.
Correct.
Which means not, and non-school.
Correct.
Yeah.
And in the, it, just to, no, I asked because in the past, we've, we voted to increase it or we voted to increase the, the first page, which is kind of the hourly and the salaried people. But there's a list of appointed specials who are generally stipend people. Obviously, some are minimum wage, that wouldn't affect them. And sometimes it's voted that those are increased, but not those, but not the stipends. So I just want to make sure it was across the board.
Minimum wage employees would remain minimum wage employees, but the, the rest, it would be, it would affect, yes.
Thank you.
Moved and seconded to approve the 2% COLA for, petition for the 2% COLA for all personnel plan employees for fiscal year 22. I'll call the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Thunderhill?
Yes.
Or if this carried.
Thank you.
Next item on the, I'm sorry, thank you?
I said, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is a request that we received from the finance committee asking that the board member attend their meetings. I'm okay with that. I just would ask your approach here. I mean, there's a lot of meetings, so we could do this. One takes a meeting. I'm not looking to add my own meetings every week to the finance, not that I, I don't care about the finance. I mean, I shouldn't say that. Just another meeting every week. I would like to ask if the board members would be willing to consider this a rotating appointment? I guess that's what I'm trying to get at. Each one takes a different week, but if you think that's not a good idea. I know I can't do it next week, so, but they do have a week, the meeting every week this month.
I'm, well, I'm happy to do it, but I don't want to preclude Erin, if she would like to participate.
I'm sorry. I, I, I have a lot of meetings as it is, and to make this manageable for everyone, if everyone does want to do a rotation, I'm willing to do that, but I don't feel I can just take it on myself at the moment.
I, I like the idea of the rotating meetings myself, but I think, you know, I'm happy, unless Jim wants to do it, which I know that he doesn't have much going on recently, so.
Pete, can you do the?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Jim, literally.
Can you do the 10th?
Oh, gosh, let me see.
That's, that's, that's Wednesday.
The 10th is Wednesday.
This Wednesday.
Yes, I should be able to do the 10th.
Erin, can you do the 17th?
Um, I believe so. Yes, it's on Zoom, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. And can you do the 12th? Yes. Okay, there we go. That's next week, and we'll meet again before we decide.
Sure.
So I, I'm, I appreciate your willingness to participate, and I'd like to honor the request of the FinCom, and I just think it's a lot to ask one of our members to go every week. So let's do it this way, and if we find it's effective, then we'll just rotate it through to the end of the year.
I am going to make a comment, and that is, Erin, I know you have a lot on your plate right now with the kids and all the other stuff. So if you can't make it, if it's getting tight, call me, and if I can possibly do it, I will.
Oh, I appreciate. Oh, I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay. Is that okay with you, Mr. Chairman?
That's fine, I, I'm trying to spread the wealth here.
No, I know, but I also know Erin's plate is quite full right now.
Yeah, I can, I can handle the seventeenth. Um, I might wear green and.
Oh, yeah, it's St. Patrick's Day. I wonder if they're actually meeting on St. Patrick's Day, they might not be. Although what is everybody, although what is anybody doing on St. Patrick's Day anyway, this year?
I'm happy with it, I just can't do it on the tenth or the seventeenth. I mean, if I get all the rest of them, that's fine.
I like, I like fi- finance committee meetings, to be honest with you. I enjoyed going to the ones I went to, so I, I'm happy to participate, seventeenth is fine.
You're going to need some counseling here.
I, I was just going to say, careful what you wish for, Erin.
I didn't want to be the one to say it.
But I, but I, I applaud the enthusiasm.
Okay, so we made it, that's what we'll do, just get it done effectively, and, um, I guess Karen or Mike, could you just get back to Deirdre and tell her, yes, we're, we're going to attend, we're going to sort of rotate for the first three, um, and then, you know, we're happy to work with them.
All right. Mike, I can send an email tomorrow.
Great, yeah. I'd like them to send them the material to, to Mr. Jermaine ahead.
Yeah.
Okay. Youth baseball, signed.
Oh, that's me, I'm up, pun intended.
Yes.
It's late, a little humor. Um, so Millis Youth Baseball is looking to just place some lawn signs around to advertise for signup. Um, we're all a little, we're all thankful that we're going to try to move forward with some baseball this year for the kids. Um, they want to start placing them as early as tomorrow. They've requested, um, placing them for six weeks. Um, that's entirely up to the board. In the past, you've allowed things to go for about three weeks, but again, entirely up to you, and they have listed a few locations here, um, where they would like to put a sign. Again, it's like a two-by-three lawn sign that you just stick into the ground. Um, and it is by, uh, Jason Kagan, I believe is the current, um, president of the Millis Youth Baseball.
Any comments? I mean, we, we have, uh, in the past restricted a little bit. We're not, um, really responsible for, uh, enforcing any sign by law on private property, that's not, that's not for us to determine.
Correct.
But if they're going to put it on town, then it is, uh, you know, the, the board will have to approve that.
Yes, and these are, and they will probably, will see some on private property as well, they mentioned, but this was just, they wanted to get them out at some kind of major location to let people know this is going to be happening.
Yep.
I don't have any problem with it, and I certainly, given all that's going on, they want it for six weeks, or, so I wouldn't object.
Same.
I agree as well. I mean, this is the time to bend over backwards. I mean, we tried to help our restaurants and whatnot. Early on, we tried to reduce some licensing fees and we ought to be encouraging this, so I make a motion that we approve this request for the two-by-three signs, uh, uh, beginning on March ninth for a period of six weeks.
Second.
Wonderful.
Approve the request. I'll poll the board, Mr. McCaffrey, yes?
Yes.
Is Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried, you know? Okay, we didn't get minutes, did we?
Yes.
We did.
You did.
Yeah, she sent some minutes, which.
I sent them on Thursday, Jim.
Yep. But I'm negligent, as usual.
But if, but if you haven't read them, then there's no sense trying to approve them, I could just add them again next time and hopefully have more to give you.
I read part of them.
You read part of the sheet?
I can't tell you much of part, but I did read part.
Just the part that mentions him is what he did.
Yeah, yeah.
How did you know?
So, Mr. Chair, would you like me to just bring them back next time again?
Yes, please.
Okay. I, I've been trying to send them under separate cover as I get them done just to, but maybe that's not helpful.
No, that's, I'm, I, that's possible, I should have checked and I apologize, so just bring them up next time.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, now we've reached the point where we're going to, uh, consider going into executive session. I assume we have a different number?
Yes.
God only knows how that's going to work, but we'll see.
I, I emailed that directly prior to our meeting here, so you should have an email, but you can.
Oh, I have it. Whether or not my machine will work is another thing entirely, but I may find you on the phone, who knows? I hope you don't leave, don't leave without me. So I would take a motion, uh, from the board to go into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate, 61A Village Street, uh, 61A Parcelon Village Street, and to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with union and non-union personnel. That includes the SEIU contract and the discussion with the finance director on her contract. After we conclude these conversations, we will emerge from executive session and then adjourn the public session. So I will take a motion for the board to go into executive session.
I move we go into executive session.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I'll poll the board, Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Is Underhill?
Yes.
That motion is carried, so now we will go into executive session and I'll see you all on the other side. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.